In progress.
Did I do?
No.
Hit this?
Hit broadcast.
I think it popped up for all of us, so.
Okay.
Ready to go, Gail? Can I go?
Continue. Okay, we are ready.
All right, thank you. Okay, call to order, we have a quorum. Welcome to the May 25th City Council meeting, 24th City Council meeting.
You're not 25th.
Oh, oops, yeah, because yesterday was your birthday. Thank you very much. Ojai City Council meeting, may we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Sticks?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Here.
Councilmember Blatts will be joining the meeting shortly. Councilmember Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
Here.
Thank you, Gail. And Randy, will you please lead us in the pledge?
Will you all please stand and place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me? I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, visible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Randy. And may we have approval of, hi Ryan, good evening, approval of the agenda?
Mayor Sticks, I just want to just clarify, at least my packet, maybe some others had five and six reversed, and just make sure that that's noted, that we're going to, that the official agenda and the packet is the order we're going to go in. I mean, the online posting is what we're going to go by.
Yes, thank you, Bill.
And then can we just note, Item 1K, which was the ordinance to correct the old language regarding transfer of animals? It's, this item's actually the introduction of the ordinance. It was listed as adoption of the ordinance, but this is the introduction, and it'll be on the next agenda for adoption, assuming that it's approved tonight, so.
And I'll just add that that's lawful as the substance is the same, same ordinance, same text, just noting which, where we are in the process. Thank you.
All right, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Consent is the agenda, and I will second that.
Okay, roll call, please, Gail?
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. And then we have a couple of presentations, James?
Yes. And the first presentation item, and so for both of these items, we have short videos, one shorter than the other, but, and so we'll introduce and we'll go to those. Obviously during COVID, trying to do presentations and bringing people into chambers is difficult. So both of these, we tried to do videos to make them kind of work under these circumstances. But the first item is a presentation of the Ojai Valley Community Hospital for all their work during the coronavirus pandemic. And specifically, what we really wanted to recognize is all of the work that the hospital put into the vaccine clinic at Nordoff High School. And I think working on this with the hospital, with all the other partners, the school district, help of Ojai, the hospital, Ventura County, what we, I think what we saw kind of firsthand was that Ojai probably wouldn't have gotten a vaccine clinic if it wasn't for organizations being willing to really step up and advocate, and not only advocate, but show up and, you know, have staff set up and run the clinics. So, you know, it almost seems like old news now that we had a vaccine clinic here very early, and the Ojai Valley was able to get a large amount of people vaccinated very quickly. But as it was happening and up to it happening, like, we really saw firsthand the amazing amount of work and collaboration from all the organizations. But specifically with community, the Ojai Valley Community Hospital really taking lead and making it happen. So with that in mind, we asked the hospital if we could give them a, make a presentation to them. And we ended up agreeing to do it onsite about 10 days ago. So one note before we show the video is, they mentioned in the video, the upcoming vaccine clinics, those were the clinics that just occurred. So with that note, we're going to go to the video of our presentation to the Ojai Valley Community Hospital on behalf of the city.
Hello, it's my pleasure to be here today to present a proclamation on behalf of Ojai City Council to Ojai Community Hospital, and also in gratitude to Nordoff as well as the city. And it's a great example of us working together to collaborate. So, so much gratitude to the hospital and all the workers. City of Ojai, proclamation. Whereas, when the coronavirus pandemic first hit in early 2020, the Ojai Valley Community Hospital took immediate action to safely continue serving Ojai residents. And whereas, the hospital increased infection control practices at both the hospital and its skilled nursing facility, began COVID-19 testing, created negative pressure rooms for use should the hospital need to house COVID-19 patients, and even delayed tearing down its old skilled nursing facility in case the space was needed for patients. And whereas, the hospital processed more than 60,000 COVID-19 tests, offered a vaccination clinic at Nordoff High School in coordination with other local agencies, and administered more than 15 vaccine, 15,000 vaccine doses. And whereas, hospital staff and volunteers put in long hours away from their families to maintain increased precautions and ensure community safety. And whereas, as a result, the hospital experienced zero cases of coronavirus transmission at the hospital and skilled nursing facility, zero cases of staff-to-staff transmission, and overall played an essential role in keeping Corona cases, case numbers low in the Ojai Valley. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Betsy Sticks, Mayor of the City of Ojai, and on behalf of the Ojai City Council, do recognize the Ojai Valley Community Hospital for its extraordinary service to the community of the Ojai Valley during the coronavirus pandemic. Thank you. And what an honor it is to present this to the hospital, and you're so grateful, once again, to all of the incredible work. So it's my honor right now to introduce our city manager, Mr. James Vega. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sticks. I'm Ojai City Manager James Vega, and we're here today to show our appreciation to the Ojai Community Hospital, as well as all the other organizations that have been part of launching the Ojai Vaccine Clinic here at Nordoff High School. Over the last 14 months, as we went through this unprecedented pandemic, there have been numerous challenges and obstacles that key organizations within the Ojai Valley have banded together to address and to overcome. And what, just one of them was the challenge of rolling out and launching a vaccine clinic very quickly and effectively, and allowing the community here in Ojai to be vaccinated. And as we went through the processes of responding to those challenges, multiple times, whether it was testing, vaccine clinics, or numerous other challenges, Ojai Community Hospital was a leader in the community and was able to coordinate these things for Ojai residents. Behind me is the Ojai Vaccine Clinic here at Nordoff High School. The, we will be introducing in a moment representatives from the Ojai Hospital, who will tell you more detail about the thousands of people that were vaccinated here in Ojai through this vaccine clinic, and some of the other efforts that the Ojai Hospital has made during the pandemic. So with that, I'd like to introduce Hadi Laskari from the Ojai Community Hospital, and he will be speaking next. Thank you.
Mayor Sticks, council members, Mr. Vega, distinguished members and guests, my colleagues and I are honored to be here today to receive this proclamation on behalf of Ojai Valley Community Hospital and Community Memorial Hall system. I'd like to introduce some of the members of our team that are here with us today. Connie Patterson. Connie's been our site coordinator for this collaboration throughout the last 14 weeks. Nancy Thompson. Nancy as well has been involved from the very beginning at each of the clinics. Chris Rock, the director of our foundation, has been involved, as well as Steve Frank. Steve, most of you know, with Lifeline, also the president of our foundation. We have many other members of our team that have been involved from the beginning, members of our hospital team, as well as volunteers. Kate Barnhart, one of our foundation members, was here on many days escorting patients to get vaccinated. Dr. Hirsch, and Ed Palito, and others. And I run the risk of missing folks as I, anytime I go into names. Over the last year, we've all participated and bear witness to sacrifices that we've all had to make to combat this deadly pandemic. For many of us, it's been personal sacrifices and losses, and it's something that we're going to always, always remember. Those of us in healthcare have received, had access to receive the COVID vaccine at the end of December. It was one of the first signs of hope. And yet, and we knew that at the time, as we were getting the vaccine, that normalization in our community wasn't going to really begin until distribution was widely spread, and that we reached herd immunity, which has been a really big part of the goal of what we've tried to accomplish here in the valley. This collaboration has been a perfect example of what can be accomplished when a group of people come together, both public and private partnerships with a common single goal. And that's exactly what's been, what's been done. The county's COVID clinic here at Nordoff High School has given over 15,000 COVID vaccine doses to date. We anticipate that we'll have hit 16,000 doses by the end of the 14-week commitment. That's really over a period of 27 clinic days, and we will have distributed Moderna, Pfizer, and JanJ vaccine at the site. There's a number of folks that I really want to thank in really being able to make this collaboration happen. I want to thank the Ojai Unified School District for their support in utilizing the Nordoff High School Gymnasium. Superintendent Dr. Tiffany Morris was instrumental in really supporting getting a site here in Ojai, as well as Principal Dave Monson and his entire crew, who's been, they've been such gracious hosts, hosting us as we've gone through over the last 12 weeks. The County of Ventura should be recognized for their efforts to be supportive of public and private partnerships. Specifically, Dr. Livin, Barry Zimmerman, Brittany Lundquist, and their dedicated staff have been so instrumental in getting this off the ground and supporting us in bringing a vaccine clinic here in the valley. Terry Wolf, with help of Ojai, has been so very instrumental in really serving some of the most underserved and heavy-hit populations, and really ensuring that we have access to the vaccine to all populations here in the valley. Steve Frank with Lifeline, Lifeline has been there every step of the way throughout the pandemic, and certainly as we have this clinic running here. I want to thank Mr. Vega, Mr. Vega, councilmembers, the mayor, and really the city of Ojai for being supportive of the hospital and the vaccine site. I also want to recognize the city's effort for helping disseminate and implement science-based approaches throughout the entire period. I think back to a lot of the discussions we've had, and from the very beginning, you know, I think the way that the city conducted themselves and their approach to running the city and businesses has just been right on point with matching the science. So kudos to all of you. A couple Saturdays ago, I broke for lunch during the clinic, and I'm going to try not to get emotional. I have a tendency to do that at these types of, at these types of things. We have a, we were breaking for lunch, and one of our critical care nurses was here from CMH. And we, as I shared, we've had a lot of volunteers from a lot of our different departments without the health system that have participated in keeping this clinic running. And over lunch, the critical care nurse and I really had an opportunity to talk about how hard it's been over the last year, and a lot of the sacrifices that have had to be made. And we talked about how every vaccine that we give today here at the site is one less person we see in the emergency department. And one less patient we see with a COVID diagnosis. We also talked about how the clinic has had a really therapeutic impact to all of us as a team, and to all of us healthcare workers and volunteers that, with a lot of the sacrifices that have made over the last year. And so while I'm accepting the proclamation on behalf of the hospital and on behalf of our team, I think it'd be really important to also thank our team. I want to join the council in publicly thanking our team. It never ceases to amaze me, the nurses, the doctors, respiratory therapists, lab personnel, housekeepers, facilities, staff, and, and, you know, all of the sacrifices that have been made over the last year in keeping things running. And especially how the team has really responded during times of adversity. And I've witnessed this during the Thomas Fire, most recently through the pandemic. And it really makes me feel like I have the easiest job in the world because of the team that I get to work with. So thank you for the proclamation, and Ojai, please join us in getting the vaccine. We have three more Saturdays here, and we hope to see you here. Thanks.
So as I mentioned, we filmed that a couple of weeks ago, so those dates, those vaccine clinic dates have passed. But we just wanted to make sure, and we wanted to do it before the clinics ended, because we wanted to show our appreciation to the hospital and all of the people who stepped up to make that happen. We, at one point, we talked about sending a link to every hospital employee and asking them if they wanted to come on and do like a big Zoom thank you, and we realized it'd be, you know, 1,000 little boxes on our screen. So we decided to do it this way, but obviously, I think, on behalf of the city, we told them thank you from the city and from our residents and the whole community, so.
So, Mayor Sticks, can I say something really quick? I just, I, we have to be so grateful and thankful for the people, for the institution. I think back to how close this community came to losing a hospital in the valley, and the way this community rallied, and now have, well, I think, one of the better institutions a small community has anywhere for hospital care. And it's just, it's really important, and we, I'm just so thankful.
Thank you. I think there was a point early, or early on, where we thought that we very might well not have a vaccine clinic in Ojai, and that people, kind of the answer had been that people would have to drive to the fairgrounds. And we talked about, you know, the elderly and people at risk not being able to do that. And so the hospital, you know, really stepped up a lot. They mentioned a lot of organizations contributed, but we wanted to recognize the hospital for that, and so they made it happen. Councilmember Haney, I see.
I just wanted to say too, that I agree with Bill's statement 100%. Mary did a beautiful presentation. And Hadi did an excellent job saying thank you to his staff. And I would just like to take the moment to say thank you to James Vega, because I know that he was the guy lubricating the greasy wheel behind the scenes. And James was pushing hard on the county supervisors and county managers, city managers, to actually understand and recognize the need that this community had. So thank you, James, thank you, Hadi, and Mayor, thank you for the lovely presentation.
Thank you.
Pleasure, yeah, and I'd like to just reiterate that, thank you so much, James. And Doctor Vega, almost at this point, you know so much. And just, it's such a great example of how our community can come together and collaborate and support each other, so, thank you.
Thank you. And then if no other comments, we'll move to the second presentation, which, let me share my screen for one second, and then we have a, we have a short video on this too. But a couple of weeks back, the city council approved a recommendation that came from a disaster council meeting, which was to have an Ojai Emergency Preparedness Day. And we talked, you know, I don't, we talked about, you know, we eventually want to make this big and make it, you know, maybe Emergency Preparedness Week, but for this first year, we're going to start with Emergency Preparedness Day. It is Thursday, May 27th, so it is coming up. It will be at Libby Park in the Fountain Area at 11:00 AM. We have a presentations from the city, the Supervisor LeVere's office, and Ojai Cert, and then Ventura County Sheriff's Department, and Ventura County Fire Department, with some other organizations like Humane Society and the crew, that are going to set up some tables and have some information as well. And the goal with this event is to get everybody ready for the next emergency, because it's not a matter of if, but when. And before, we have a short video inviting the community to that event, very short. I know the last one was 10 minutes, the next one is probably 30 seconds, but I wanted to give a plug that we are going to give away, we have these City of Ojai flashlights. I don't know if you can see that. And so they're little pocket flashlights as part of the emergency preparedness items. And we are going to give these away. We'll have, we'll have an event at the park with face coverings, with hand sanitizer, outdoors distance. But if, we know that if people aren't comfortable with that yet, this is also all going to be livestreamed on the website and the YouTube channel. And so with that, we'll go to this short video with more information.
The City of Ojai is blessed to have good weather, but we are not immune to natural disasters such as earthquakes, landslides, or fire.
Message we want to give you today is, when you smell smoke, and even before that, you need to get prepared to dealing with wildfires.
During times of major emergencies, we work cooperatively with city officials, local officials, and you are constituents to prepare you during natural disasters.
I would like to invite you for Emergency Preparedness Day on May 27th at 11 o'clock in Libby Park.
Bring your family, bring your friends, there'll be a fire truck, a police car, and we can all learn how we can be prepared for the next emergency. See you there.
So with that, you know, we just, we wanted to get the word out about that event. Like I said, people can livestream it and view it on our YouTube channel as well. But everybody is invited on May 27th at Libby Park at 11:00 AM to get prepared for the next emergency, so.
Great, and thank you, James, so much for getting this going, so important and a big step forward, so. Flashlights look cool, too. Okay, moving on to, we have public communications, Gail?
Yes, one moment.
Thank you.
And we have no commission reports.
Correct.
We have one person for public communications, Wendy Larmer. Let me go ahead and bring her in.
Thank you.
Wendy, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Physicist Stephen Conan, former undersecretary for science with the U.S. Department of Energy, has written a very compelling book about how the crisis of climate change is not settled science. Readers may be shocked by the book's contradiction of four major points of climate orthodoxy. Heat waves in the U.S. are now no more common than they were in 1900, and the warmest temperatures in the U.S. have not risen in the past 50 years. Humans have had no detectable impact on hurricanes over the past century. Greenland's ice sheet isn't shrinking any more rapidly today than it was 80 years ago. Mr. Conan is no climate change denier, he is a climate change realist. He makes it clear on the book's first page that it's true that the globe is warming and that humans are exerting a warming influence upon it. The heart of the science debate, however, isn't about whether the globe is warmer or whether humanity contributed. The important questions are about the magnitude of civilization's contribution and the speed of change, and derivatively about the urgency and scale of governmental response. Mr. Conan thinks most readers will be surprised at what the data shows. I dare say you will be. As Mr. Conan illustrates, tornado frequency and severity are also not trending up, nor are the number and severity of droughts. The extent of global fires has been trending significantly downward. Rate of sea level rise has not accelerated. Global crop yields are actually rising, not falling. And while atmospheric CO2 levels are higher now than two centuries ago, they're not at any record planetary high. They're at a low that has only been seen once before in the past 500 years. When it comes to the heralded computer models, Mr. Conan is persuasively skeptical. And he notes that some of the tuning done to models so that they work better amounts to cooking the books. Mr. Conan's science credentials are impeccable. He has been a professor of physics at Caltech and served as the top scientist in Barack Obama's Energy Department. Since all the data that Mr. Conan uses are available to others, he poses the obvious questions. Why haven't you heard these facts before? As a matter of fact, very few people actually read the science assessment conclusions. I suggest before you spend millions of dollars and cost residents millions of dollars, you read the science summaries and conclusions for yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, moving on to the consent calendar, is there a motion to approve everything? Randy?
To approve, but I would like to just, I'd like to pull Item I.
Okay. Anything else? Nope.
Second.
Okay, all right, can we vote on that, please, Gail?
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, Randy, you want to talk about I?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions, you know, um, there's a, I guess there's a lot of numbers in this report, but they're almost, they're all old numbers. I didn't really see too much relative to today. So, for instance, the eight-hour ozone levels in Ventura County, we listed 2008, and we listed, I think, on the previous page, it was, oh, two, maybe it was 2008 was the earliest one. But it doesn't say, it says it twice, and just refer back to later years. But the actual air quality in our community has gotten better. Am I correct, Mr. Vega? If I read this before correctly?
Yes.
I mean, heck of a lot better. So I just wanted to make sure that the community understands that there's a lot of effort that has gone into this since, let's say, 2008 to present, with the last couple of years being even more eventful and more leaning into air quality from this, from the council as a whole. So that was one thing I wanted to state. The second thing is the residential growth management plan. It was a formula that says city population times 0.005, and then persons per household. But is that a standard formula? Is that, I mean, where does that formula come from, and what does that formula mean? If we have the knowledge, or do we need to read Lucasian, or how does that work?
Yeah, it's the formula that we've identified in our city code for how we calculate the number of residential allotments. So it's not necessarily, it's not, every city doesn't necessarily do it the same way, but it's the way we've identified in our city code that we are going to do it. So that's what that formula is. So that's something, you know, we can look at as, if there's interest in reexamining that, we can do that. But this report was simply reporting using that existing formula.
So I guess the question would be, the residential construction allocations, what is the actual allocations that are available to this community? Is it the 183, or has it increased to 215?
Yeah.
That would be on Page 3 of 5, 1 of 69.
Yeah, we should have had it totaled, and I don't see it. I believe it's that 183 plus 16 for another, oh, actually, no, it is, it is there, on Page 3 of 5. So it is a total of 215 in 2020.
So does that mean that we would, that we would permit only 215 residential units if we had 20, if we had 215 requests? That's the limit that we would, that we would allocate, or that we have, and no more? Is that what this means?
You know, I'm not sure if that's like a hard cap, so we can have. You know, I'm not sure if that's like a hard cap, so we can have.
It is the limit, if I could jump in on that one. It is currently the limit set by the code. There is an exception process if a series of particular findings are made, and as I recall, that gets kicked up to the city council through a particular hearing process, but that's the, the default amount of allotments that remain available under the current code, subject to that process. And I'll note that under the current ordinance, it is set to expire October 1st of this year, so as part of the housing element process, and that's what that date's tied to, as part of the housing element process, the council can revisit this and decide, is this something to maintain, adjust, or let go as part of the next housing element?
Well, where my questions are going to show that, so the rest of council members understand that, I'm hearing that there might be a affordable housing complex being presented to planning soon, with the number starting out around 200 units, and I was just wondering how that is going to be impacted by this ordinance or by this, this code. So that was, that was the, one of the, why I'm asking this question. The second thing is, I just wanted to clarify that as a community, we're decreasing in population, not increasing.
Yes.
It's, we just got to be clear on that. And then, and then we had 22 ADUs built in the last year, that's part of the facts that are here, yes?
Yep, correct.
And then the last thing is air quality, again, it doesn't really clearly state that we're better off or that, you know, what's our average reading? I mean, what's our daily reading? What's our monthly reading? I think that if we're going to provide information, that maybe we, we could actually state some harder facts on it, that's all.
Yeah, we can, we can clarify that. We, well, let me just say, Randy, what do you want to know? I'm the chairman of the Air Pollution Control District, I follow the Ojai air data.
I'm sorry, Ryan, I can't, I can't hear you.
My micro, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
What would you like to know? Because I deal with this on a, you know, a monthly basis, that Ojai has improved year over year substantially in the last 10 years to finally become compliant. We've been working on it at APCD forever. Ojai was the only non-compliant city other than Seamy Valley, or the only one that's not strict, you know, due to a highway driving right by that they can't really control significantly.
I understand, I, I guess what I'm trying to say, Ryan, is in a report, you might want to state those, those facts.
Yeah.
Where we were, where we are, what we did, how we did it, so that the community is just, I mean, this is a report to the community, it's not just the council. So that's all I'm trying to say is, is it just maybe down the road, we add some, we add a few more facts to it, that's all.
Well, I'm with you. I mean, I think we ought to, but I mean, that, that chart on page 1-70 is the one that actually shows the concurrence and.
Right.
You know, I mean, the, the good news is, and it's not strictly the city, it's the valley, but we have come down, we're compliant, you know, since I've been on APCD, went from non-compliant to compliant with the federal and state standards, and we're doing, we're doing a lot, but it's really things we can't control in the city. The general plan is already as restrictive as it really reasonably can be regarding traffic, and we're decreasing population. It's external factors out on the 101 and all the way out in the channel. In fact, I got a report today about the program we run at APCD where we pay shippers to slow down in the channel to save the whales, and then they produce a whole bunch less. It's funny with these, the engines they use, under, it's like, under 15 knots, it's like 300% less pollution or some weird, you know, crazy proportional number, and the money we're spending on that, but that's where it's coming from. The hard part is that, when you look at air quality data, it's very dependent on the temperature. So when we're hot, we're non, we're not as compliant, and it has nothing to do with anything we can control. The heat causes the compounding of the, the chemical reaction that causes these organic compounds essentially to turn into ozone, ozone and other types of pollutants, and that's the really difficult part. So anytime we have a hot year, or like when we had the Thomas Fire, that was a real problem with, with pollution that was built up, that's where it's different. But I can say this, I don't know of anything we really have, I asked this question at APCD many times, what in the Ojai Valley do we have that we have any control of, or in the City of Ojai that can change this number? And it's, it's very limited. We've, we've essentially done pretty much what we can, but it's moving in the right direction, so at least, Randy, I want to make sure it's clear about that, but these are not tied indirectly to population. We had the average, the longest average commute, you know, of any city in the, in the county, but it's not even that that's causing it, because our general plan doesn't allow any construction that's new that has a new rush hour traffic trip essentially in and out of the southern part of the valley to Ventura. So there's not a ton we can do, but, you know, if you want any more data on this, I only bring it up and bring it, because I, I'd be happy, I mean, we were going to do a presentation, my, my world got a little turned upside down, and I was going to bring up some of this stuff a couple council meetings ago. But if there's any other information you'd like, but it's not, this is about housing allotments and people and population, they really don't have much impact. It's about vehicle miles traveled, average travel trips, and, and then ultimately heat. And unfortunately, it's hot here, which is the biggest factor.
Well, again, I, again, I'm looking for just information and, and facts, so I appreciate that, your input on that, Ryan, and I, and I know James is taking notes on that for the future.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
Bill and, or Matt, and then Bill, or Bill and then Matt?
I'll go briefly, again, just one additional point for the council and public's awareness. It is also worth bearing in mind that certain qualifying affordable housing projects that meet various requirements are exempt from the growth management plan requirements under the current code. So depending on the structure of this project that might be in the works, it may not need to tap into that 215 unit allowance, although it'll depend, of course, on the precise facts which have to be assessed against the code as it moves through the process. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Bill?
James, Matthew, I was just wondering if you have any update on when we expect the actual 2020 census data to be released at our level, the city level, as opposed to the, you know, the macro numbers for the states that have been let out so far?
The best information we have is that we should have it available at the, from the feds by the end of September, and then this, once that data comes out, I know the timing is not good, and then the state takes a month to reallocate, at least for the Voting Rights Act purposes, to reallocate persons who are currently inmates in the state prison, to reallocate them to where they originally lived, and where they're still living on the books, and then, because the census measures them, the feds measure them in the prison, and the state reallocates them back out to the communities from which they came, that we should get by the end of October. So short answer, end of October, we'll have to use some estimates as we're looking at this particular program as part of the housing element process.
Well, the easy answer is whatever the last day is, they can give it to us and still make us have to use it for the next election.
That's right.
Absolutely. The state has not made that easy, nor the feds.
Randy?
Well, we, we could move to have an update in late October to amend this report, but instead of doing that, I'd like to make the motion that we approve I.
Wait, wasn't Bill going to speak?
He just did, you did.
He already spoke.
Yeah, and I just, I want to say thank you, Randy, for bringing that up. Good question, Ryan, great information, really appreciate that, and, and yes, it's great that we're making progress, and we can just, what we can do is keep going electric, get off the, the gas and oil, and.
It is great. If we could cool the valley down, that would be the biggest single factor, but I don't know if we could do that yet. But, yeah, it is, you're absolutely right, and we, we, you know, it's, it's night, I mean, I'm very proud of the fact that, that APCD has been working on this for a long time, but Ojai is finally compliant, barely, not by a lot, but people don't understand that the air in the valley is not good, and the fact that we have this, you know, north-south valley that all the air gets trapped in from the ocean and from the highway is the main factor, so we, we do need to be cognizant of it, and it's, you know, people don't understand it, but you know, when you go up to the, when you go up to the lookout, sometimes you can actually, you can see the haze in the valley, it's a real thing. So I'm glad we're getting, not as often as used to.
Second, Randy's motion.
Okay, great, may we have a vote, please, Gail?
And after the vote, we have a speaker.
Okay.
For the consent calendar. One moment. Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Thank you. And a speaker, what item is that, Gail?
I don't know, I can bring him on and he can tell us, it's for, for agenda item one, so the, the consent calendar. It's Colin Jones. Colin, you should be able to speak now, if you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead. Are you there? Colin, if you're there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I actually wanted to speak on 1M. That's what I wanted to speak about, the request for the City of Ojai Arts Commission to utilize the city government's access television channel, should I wait to do that?
No.
No, you can do it now.
Okay.
It was approved.
Okay, now, thank you for letting me speak. As a collector of art for over 30 years, I watched with great interest the April 22nd meeting of the Arts Commission. Unfortunately, the first few minutes were spent bickering about the need for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Commission Chair, Marcy Tosha, stated that, for those so inclined, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance, and then added, no one wants to do it. After some interval, Robin Gerber stepped forward and recited the pledge, but omitted under God. A discussion ensued regarding whether the pledge was required and why it was required. It was referred to as an unnecessary formality, and it was decided that Luis Gomez, Art Commission liaison, would research whether or not the pledge could be dropped from the meetings. Now, I know the Commissioner's time is valuable, but reciting the pledge takes about 14 seconds, less if you rush it and leave out certain words. For myself, as an immigrant, I've always been proud to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, even before I became a citizen. I'm grateful to my adopted country, and I wish to show my gratitude. I believe that in these times when our country is divided, a few moments of citizenship, time for us to come together regardless of background, color, or political affiliation is necessary and affirming. The words "one nation under God, indivisible" was meant for us to reflect back on another time when the country was divided, to ponder the Civil War and its devastating effects on the nation. My fear is that there is an agenda afoot to water down our patriotism and pride in our country. Once one commission abandons the pledge, other commissions will follow suit, and finally, the city council will be forced to abandon it. This has happened in other cities across the nation. So, should we, should these commissioners who represent the citizens of Ojai and their money, these commissioners who think the Pledge of Allegiance is an unnecessary formality, who seem unwilling to confirm their allegiance to our republic, should they be serving in government advisory positions? Should they be given access to the airwaves? I think not, and I'm not alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Randy?
Those are points well taken. That's a very meaningful statement. I'm hoping the Arts Commission is listening, or members are listening. That's the first that I think any of us have heard of that, and I'm not sure what to do with it, but I'm not, I'm concerned with it, that's for sure.
Mayor Stix?
Yes. Phil?
Matthew, isn't there some sort of statutory element to this in California Government Code for general law cities?
You know, I'm not sure, off the top of my head, if the pledge is required as part of general law city meetings, it is typical, every, every city meeting I've ever attended has begun with the Pledge of Allegiance, but I, I do not know off the top of my head if it's legally required. It is required as part of, there's a particular format for the oath taken by every public official. We will take a look at that question and, and report back to the council with.
Yeah, I thought I remembered something in the statutes, but, you know, I'm not sure.
I also think every individual council member, commissioner, or anything else has a, has a right to abstain from it if they want and still be part of the meeting.
Oh, yes, it is not, recitation of the pledge is not a condition to service, you can stand.
The words they use are not, you know, they can use whatever words they would like to recite during it, and I think that's appropriate, but the idea that it should be removed, I don't, I don't agree with, and I think everyone should have the right to choose for themselves how they would like to recite it.
Yeah, I didn't mean to imply you have to, I just remember something about the official thing, and, you know, with general law cities, that's all I remember.
The recital itself is about choice, and allegiance is not guaranteed, but dude, I, I prefer to recite it because I, I do mean it when I say it, and I.
I agree.
We all agree. They want.
As, as, that's three, not on tonight's agenda, I would recommend we, we return to the regular order, return to our agenda. We will, I will answer the legal question, but we'll get back to council, and then council can consider it further from there. The, my last point would be if there's discussion, it could, or desire for discussion among the council, it could be added to a future agenda at future agenda items. Apologies for cutting someone off there.
Thank you, much appreciated, Matt. Randy, and then we'll.
And I would just take it one step further and say, maybe the liaisons each of these commissions should talk to the chair and find out what's going on. So as liaison to the Arts Commission, I'll ask Marcy, and, and just find out what is and what isn't.
Okay, thank you, Randy. All right, well, moving on to discussion, first is the COVID report. Thank you, James.
Yeah, and we will probably be making each of these reports kind of briefer and briefer here as we get closer to June 15th, but we will just quickly, quickly go through some of the highlights. I think the big thing today that we heard, that we found out just a couple hours ago is that on June 2nd, the County of Ventura is expecting to reach yellow tier status. Some of us had, had given up on that happening, and we were thinking it was just going to, we were going to get through to June 15th when the, when the state was going to have some changes, but it actually looks like at this point we are on track to move to yellow tier on June 2nd, 2021. And the reason that is important is there are some key changes to certain categories where, where things are less restrictive. Gatherings can be larger groups, up to 100 people outdoors, whereas currently it's 50. Private events can expand to maximum of 200 people outdoors, those are things like conferences. Gyms and fitness centers can increase capacity to 50%. Restaurants, wineries, and breweries can be at 50% capacity. A big one, I know we don't have many bars, but bars under all the prior tiers have been closed, those can open indoors with 25% capacity or up to 100 people, and then outdoor live events can increase from, I believe it was 50% capacity up to 67. So again, it's going to be a very small window, it's going to be June 2nd to June 15th, about two weeks, but I'm sure for those businesses that have been struggling, being able to reopen a week or two earlier than maybe they started to think is probably well received. So, so June 2nd, we are current, or let me back and say, we are currently orange tier, June 2nd, we are expecting to move to yellow tier, the County of Ventura is, and then that would lead us then to June 15th, which is, again, when the state expects to lift all of those capacity restrictions and all of those tier restrictions. The state put some more information out, because a lot of people have been trying to understand what, what that means. Essentially, they clarified that on June 15th, all of the restrictions, except for restrictions on what they are calling mega events, are going to be lifted, and mega events are crowds of more than 5,000 indoors or 10,000 outdoors. So in reality, for Ojai, I can't think of any event that would classify as a mega event, even events like Ojai Day, we don't get that large of a crowd, so. So for Ojai, this would mean pretty much all events would, would, there'd be those restrictions lifting, and then, this has been confusing, so we wanted to go walk through it. What will remain in place is a loosened masking requirement. For fully vaccinated people, face coverings will not be required outdoors, except when attending those crowded events. For unvaccinated people, face coverings are required outdoors anytime that they cannot maintain the six feet of distant distancing, and we know that those get, or, and then in public transportation like the trolley, face. face coverings will continue to be required by the state. So we know that those get complicated very quickly. So we just keep kind of giving people the general rule of thumb is if you're gonna be around a lot of other people for the time being, please wear a face covering. And if you're outside exercising or doing something like that on your own, you don't, you don't need to wear the face covering once this June fifteenth order goes into effect. So, that kind of maps out the next three weeks plus at this point, from moving from orange tier to yellow tier to moving off of the tier system on June fifteenth. So, in the meantime, we're working with the county currently to install a testing kiosk that we're going to plan to install in the farmer's market parking lot, or in our downtown parking lot. The kiosk will be open on Wednesdays from nine to three. And where the reason we're working with the county on doing this is their, their testing at Sarzati Park with the big mobile testing unit is not expected to continue because the numbers just aren't supporting it. We had, up until last month, we had had at least a hundred tests every week. This last couple of weeks, it's dropped down to fifty or so. So we're just seeing the demand for those testing kiosks continue to, or for the testing to continue to drop. So, we're working on installing this testing kiosk to kind of take the place of that. And then also, the vaccination clinic is coming to an end. And so it's shifting to where you can get your appointments at the local pharmacies like Ojai Village Pharmacy, The Medicine Shop, or Rieded in Miramonte. And vaccinations are offered there or at various doctors' offices as well. So again, we're just, we're kind of in this transition period as we work towards June fifteenth. And it reflects the fact that in Ventura County, there's been eight hundred and four thousand doses of vaccine administered at this point. So the, the demand is, is dropping as more and more people get vaccinated. So. So, with that, one more quick point, which is we wanted to remind people that the Restaurant Revitalization Fund application portal has opened. It will be open until all funds are exhausted. And so any restaurants who have had pandemic-related revenue loss can and should apply, and they'd be eligible for funding through the Restaurant Revitalization Fund. It opened up earlier this month, but it will remain open until funding is exhausted. So. Then lastly, so on June fifteenth, at last council meeting, we decided that on June fifteenth that the, we would be lifting the bulk of our executive orders. Because the, besides the residential and commercial eviction moratorium, we would lift the other orders such as the face covering requirement, the city business protocol, the no-fee permits for outdoor seating, the expanded face covering requirements, and the reduced fee for outdoor fitness classes. And that we'd also start removing unused food pickup zone signs to restore those parking spots. I, I do believe that there has been some indication that we may want to continue or modify some of, one of those two programs, the outdoor seating at restaurants or the outdoor fitness class. So just to report back on that, we, we gathered some information. We currently have seven outdoor fitness classes that we've issued permits to. And some of them have, three of them have indicated as of today that they want to continue past June fifteenth if they were able to. We really don't get any complaints about those. So that could be something that the city council could choose to extend if desired. It does take up some park space, that's the drawback. But again, no, no complaints to date. And then the other was the outdoor seating at restaurants. We currently have fourteen permits issued that are still in use by restaurants. We've started to hear from those restaurants that they're interested in continuing as well. And so we wanted to mention that in case we wanted to discuss some potential options for either a new or continued permit process for either of those past June fifteenth. As of right now, I think the direction from last week was to, was to end on June fifteenth. So, so that, that's probably the one question kind of pending today for, for discussion. So with that, I will stop sharing my screen and take any questions.
Randy was first.
Okay, Randy, then Suzie.
I just, I want to clarify on that, on the, the restaurant item. Is that something that we can discuss tonight, Matt? Or is that something that we need to agendize and bring back to council at a different time? Or are we allowed to deliberate in the moment?
If it's related to the city's existing outdoor dining programs issued under the emergency orders, then it can be discussed tonight as to whether to adjust, modify, keep, provide further direction, that would be an order on the agenda added tonight.
Okay, Suzie, and then Bill? You're muted, Suzie.
James?
Yes.
Did you say that council directed that we end the restaurant outdoor dining? Is that, did we vote on it or what? There was just instruction or how did that transpire?
So last week, we, there was a vote to end all executive orders except for the eviction moratoriums on June fifteenth. But there was like, there was a, the option to extend certain items on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
So that was in there, but so, you know, that's kind of where we're at today, so.
So can, can you, can we then discuss what is the path forward to continuing to allow it?
Yeah. Let's finish the questions, and then we'll move to discussions.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. I actually, I was entering in discussion on that particular point.
Is there any public comment on this, Gail?
Yes, we have one public comment.
Okay, Ryan, question, public comment?
What's the feedback we've received as a city? Because if I'm not mistaken, I, I either, I know I, I got feedback from other parties, but I don't see anything in here directly that we've received any response from the restaurants.
Yeah, and so.
Any Fleming has, had provided me some information, but I don't, if I'm, maybe I'm missing, I don't see it in here.
Yeah, no, and we received it, you know, because we only had that one week between the decision and then the packet. So we've received that feedback since the packet went out. But Jamie Fleming did provide an update of, he met with several restaurants, and I think he had seven of them listed that wanted to continue the extensions, or wanted to continue to keep their outdoor dining through the fall if possible.
Okay, thank you.
A question or?
No, just deliberation.
Okay, we have one public comment, Gail?
Yes, we have Wendy Lerner, I'll bring her in. Wendy, you should be able to speak if you're unmuted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead. Wendy, are you there? There.
Hello?
Hi, you can go ahead.
Hello, and thank you again. I haven't been able to find statistics on COVID hospitalizations or deaths in Ojai specifically, or the Ojai Valley specifically, nor have I been able to find the number of deaths from all causes in the same areas for years twenty sixteen to twenty twenty. But since our city manager declared the emergency and you, our city council ratified it, I trust you will show evidence that this coronavirus justified a state of emergency that has remained a state of emergency for over thirteen months. The legal rights, the medical rights, the religious rights, and the economic rights of a free people. We anticipate answers, documented answers, and accurate comprehensive reports about this some soon. Was this all necessary to the extent it was practiced for the time period that it was in place? Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. All right, moving on to discussion.
May I ask a question about the comment made by Wendy Lerner? It was my understanding that this was a state mandate and a county mandate, that there was no, we simply followed those guidelines.
The state, county, and the cities, and the city all have declared emergency. And I would estimate and assume probably every city in the state has declared an emergency.
Yeah, but I mean, it wasn't like we could not, not, not declare, not, not, not declare a state of emergency.
We absolutely could have not declared it, Suzie, just so you know.
We could have.
Complete economist's choice whether to declare an emergency in our jurisdiction or not. It would have been, it would have been weird. It would have been weird that we'd have been the only like city in the maybe whole state who didn't do it.
Okay.
But we did have the authority.
It was a choice.
I just want a clarification on that.
It was a choice.
Thank you, and thank you, Ryan. Bill, comment?
Are we getting deliberation now?
Yes.
Okay, I want to suggest something. And maybe we can, you know, deal with this issue quickly of the outdoor dining. I, I think we need to recognize on June fifteenth, it's hundred percent capacity restored for the restaurants. But at, and, and we're, you know, moving beyond the emergency status to non-emergency status. But I think we still should be flexible and recognize the situation and, and think of an appropriate transition period. And I, I would like to suggest that we consider effective being able to issue temporary use permits beginning June fifteenth on a case-by-case basis, where the staff reviews what's going on, you know, especially for example, if parking spaces are being taken up, that neighboring businesses be pulled, we get feedback, it all a staff thing, not a council thing. And we don't charge anything for these permits, maybe they go for three months or something. And, and that be a way that we transition from the limited capacity to the full capacity status that we're gonna see on June fifteenth.
Randy?
You know, I, I think, I think it was last week, I stated that I wanted to see as much as our community come back to normal as possible. But I'm in an agreement with Councilman Wyrick. I would maybe like to tie it into our city calendar based on future events. What's our centennial coming up? Do we know what, what date that, is that in August or September?
Yeah, the centennial's August fifth.
And then our next one is Ojai Day, is that in October again?
Yeah, late October, around the twentieth or so.
So, I'm in concurrence, but I would probably say if we, if we wanted to continue this and then actually have a date certain, that I think Ojai Day, to me, would be a pretty good way to celebrate and end this, end this as we, as it is now, and actually get back to full enjoyment of our community. That'll also probably give us some time with the state and, and federal agencies giving us more information and more data and more conditions.
So that'd be like a four-month thing rather than three, I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
You know, I just think that that would be a way of dealing with this because the, the, we're not gonna be in an emergency situation anymore, but we want to be flexible and supportive. But we also want to recognize that, you know, especially when outdoor dining is taking up parking spaces, that impacts other businesses. And this is a time to review and, and look at those impacts.
Yeah, agreed. Suzie?
Well, I think we should get the word out that, you know, outdoor dining is part of a pedestrian-friendly downtown. It's healthy because there's many unknowns. We want to encourage people to be outside and, and as opposed to being indoors, even if it's not, you know, capacity. But my thinking is that we need to get the word out, if people really love this, they should be willing to, if they live close to town, walk to town, save the parking for people that live further away. Because the more people don't take up a parking space, the more, or don't complain about lack of parking, if you get my drift, the more we can have this type of activity out on the street. It's, it's as simple as that. At least that's part of it. Okay, that's all I want to say.
Right.
I don't know why in any way, shape, or form, we would even consider anything that's restrictive against the businesses. We've, we've, we've undoubtedly been the most impacted community of any city. We have the highest, again, lowest median income, highest communities, all these statistics that hurt us significantly. We know these restaurants are having a hard time even finding labor at this point. We haven't heard any problems, and the reality is, regardless of what people say about parking, it's not easy to find where you're supposed to park in Ojai. But there's more than sufficient on-street parking within a block or two of every downtown area in town. We know that because on the Fourth of July in Ojai Day, when it's all closed off, we have plenty of on-street parking. We don't limit it at all. It's different than LA, it's different than other places. The restaurants have requested in general, though, and they want to keep it going, not only just past June fifteenth, but at least till after Thanksgiving, and I would argue till the end of the year. As long as they want to do it, we haven't seen really significant problems with it. We don't have public input at all. And in fact, Jamie Fleming's input is not that any restaurants are complaining about the lack of parking. And these restaurants, these are the lifeblood of our downtown community. They provide the most jobs anywhere. They have been decimated during COVID. And if we allow them to have some extra space, even when at their full capacity, their own demand will dictate whether they continue on. As long as they have a significant amount of demand to be able to fill any spots that are outdoors, I don't know how in good faith we could tell these businesses, no, even though there's not a significant negative impact on Ojai, we're not going to allow you to continue to try and make some of that money back. And there's not one statistic or anything we've seen, or anybody can show me, that shows that there's this lack of parking going on, that there's a lack of ability. If the demand goes down, they'll stop having it available. It's that simple. But why would we want to put our own artificial deadlines and dates that we don't know anything about how these businesses are gonna react? All we know is that today, they want to keep doing it in an overwhelming sense. And if we, we don't want to even, we, we want to, we want to put a date on the calendar of where it absolutely has to end, even though it's not what any of them are requesting. I, I just don't, we, it feels like this council wants to punish small businesses in town worse than COVID already has. And Ventura has opened it till, by the way, February, no problem.
I, I agree with you, Ryan. We gotta support our businesses. Okay, Randy and Bill, then Bill?
So, so I agree with, with Ryan. I agree with Bill. I think most of us are on the right path on this. I think what we're saying, Ryan, is we don't have statistics either/or. So it's not fair to say that other businesses in town aren't impacted by not having parking areas adjacent to their businesses. That's why the measured approach given to the city manager is let them file for a conditional use, temporary, and do the investigation, talk to the surrounding businesses, and more likely, it's all gonna move forward in a positive way. But, yeah, I, I think we're all in agreement, it's just, you know, what are the parameters?
I believe I was.
I always agree that Ojai lands on more than likely.
Ryan, point of order, okay? I was next after Randy.
I'm responding to what he said directly to me.
Go ahead, Bill, and then we'll come back. Bill?
I think that's why we need to take turns, Ryan. Okay? I, I disagree with your reasoning, Ryan, because it elevates the concerns of one type of small business above another. All, all of our small businesses matter, and we need to support all of them equally. And I, what my suggestion, you know, is to get through a, you know, a transition period with a, a measured, as Councilman Haney was mentioning, a measured approach where we take a chance to look at the situation for each case-by-case business. We look at, we talk to other businesses, not just restaurants. And we see the, we see if there's some impacts, or give a chance for other businesses to express themselves. And we also look at whether the existing, the existing formats under the emergency orders are compliant with what was initially permitted. So I just think that it's an important step to make a transition. Emergency orders should not turn into entitlements. That's just a good government principle, that's how I feel.
Ryan?
Mayor, I'd like to know what.
Mayor, I'd like to know what, what businesses that are going to be negatively impacted that we're talking about. I mean, that nebulous comment that we're helping one type of business over others, I don't agree with that at all. I mean, which, which are the businesses that have communicated with us that the parking spaces that are so limited have negatively impacted them? I, I don't see anything in our staff report, I don't see anything in the public response, I haven't talked to anybody that does that. And in fact, most of the businesses I talk to would say, wow, gosh, you know, these restaurants have been hit so hard. I am kind of supportive of the potential that they would have more traffic there. So I, I don't know what, what those are.
Bill?
I think it's very inappropriate to discuss any specific cases and specific businesses in a council meeting. What I think is important is that we that's just good government, Ryan. We don't talk about specific businesses and the situations. What I, what I'm suggesting is that it is appropriate for full information gathering in this transition time. I trust that staff will be reasonable. And I'm going to make my suggestion in the form of a motion and see if it passes.
Ryan?
I, I just want to say, that's a joke from the guy who pushed forward the emergency ordinance for the formula business thing over one business like it, like we didn't know what it was. So I think that's completely fraudulent as a principle of something that you have dealt with before. I, I don't understand that at all. And restaurants, they have to be one restaurant, but it is one restaurant. It's always one restaurant. It's everybody hating on Topa Topa because they have one spot on Montgomery.
I'm not trying to talk about.
I don't believe, I don't believe we have any interest in trying.
They have a motion on the table, if it's not seconded, then we're not on the motion.
Randy, you have a comment?
Well, if there's a motion on the table by Councilman Wyrick, I would second it. But more importantly, because I've done this in the past, and I just want to be clear on this, we shouldn't be talking over one another, and we shouldn't be talking at each other. So let's just have, let's have a, a vote on this motion. If it passes, great. If it doesn't, then let someone else make a motion. But beating each other to death over this isn't helping the community, and it surely isn't helping either of us or any of us.
Can I, can you repeat the motion so I'm clear on the timeframe that it goes? Would you be willing to amend it so it goes to the?
I believe I accepted Randy's amendment in my motion is to go through Ojai. Ojai Day, believe it, was Randy?
Yes.
Yeah.
And?
October? Would you be?
Yeah, for the, the length of time, for the, all temporary use permits have to have a time period.
And can this also include the fitness classes, extending the fitness classes?
I'd be fine with that.
I'll lay an amendment.
Yes, outdoor, yeah. But, but James, can you, or Matt, is it true that there's a time constraint on the conditional use permit? So it couldn't go, are you saying, Bill, that it can't go through Christmas?
They have a time period associated with them.
But the council can decide what time period it wants to set for this kind of a project. This is a decision within the, within the gift of the council. So council typically, a temporary use permit has a defined end date. Conditional use permits run with the land, that's not the model we'll be using here. This will be a temporary use permit, but it does fall to council to select what that end date would be, or to delegate that power to the city manager, as the council majority may desire.
Ryan?
I, I would just ask if, if there was some willingness, because the indications from the businesses were not Ojai Day as being specific or being important, it was Thanksgiving weekend. And I would ask that if there was an entertainment, if we were going to limit it to a date specific, that is, what I, I don't like Thanksgiving, I think it should be later. I think Ventura has gone appropriately in, in February. But I would say that would be, we willing to consider in the motion a Thanksgiving date at the earliest, or post Thanksgiving.
Yeah.
Yes, Susan?
I, it just makes sense that if it's working well and it goes that long, we might as well go through Christmas, through the holidays. Because that's the most festive time, people are going to be out and about. Why not go to the end of the year? That just makes.
And, and why not, and why not give the certainty to some of these restaurants for their staffing problems that they have now? So if they make it through August, they make it through September, they can make it knowing that they're going to keep their extra space in November, and then, and then possibly in December. Because any question about the uncertainty of it leaves them stuck, waiting for us to make a decision, and they may not have the staffing if they have the other, you know, the, the other, this other space available. And that, you know, I, I don't know what the perfect date is, but I, I do, I do prefer it being later. I think that's why Ventura went to February.
Okay, Randy and then Bill?
So to me, there's a motion on the floor. I've, I'd like to vote on it. And then the other thing is, to Ryan's concerns, there's nothing stopping council coming back in September and reviewing this. There's nothing stopping council in October from extending it. So we can do that at any point in time. We're trying to move this ball along right now in the moment, so I don't know how to close the discussion without going to a point of order and then voting on that. But I think we have a motion, I'd like to vote on it.
I have a question. Does it also work in reverse? If we did extend it to the end of the year, can we all, can we still bring it back if problems arise?
Yes. Yes.
Why don't we extend it through Christmas, or the first of the year? You know, the businesses have struggled so much and made so many sacrifices, and it's just been such a hard time, so.
Well, I'm, I'm not accepting amendments to the time, because that's plenty of time to evaluate and extend it if we need to. So I'm going to leave my motion alone with the current date of the motion.
How do we make a substitute motion? Or Ryan, go ahead.
I was just going to make the comment that I, I appreciate that this council might be able to review it then. Then we're jamming it in when we don't know what the rest of our calendar looks like. But we're not doing any favors to the restaurants that need the certainty of knowing what staffing levels they'll definitely need over those months subsequent to September through the end of the year, where it makes sense that we would never, if they want to do it, stop them from doing it. And I, I, that makes no sense to me if we want to make sure they're comfortable in knowing how many people they need to have hired during then. And if we don't make this decision two weeks before, they may not be able to utilize it.
Yeah, I'd like to make, oh, Mayor Sticks. I'd like to make a substitute motion that we extend the time to the end of the year with the understanding that if problems arise, that James, with his discretion, can bring it back. But that way, the, the restaurants have some certainty, as, you know, they can plan till the end of the year. And it's, and there's always a lull, and usually there's a lull after the new year. It just makes sense, you know? So, yeah, that's my motion.
The only thing I have to say, Susan, is if you say the end of the year, if we get extended to either January 2nd or 3rd, because you don't want people to be limited potentially, like
Yes.
beyond New Year's, I don't know what day New Year's falls on, but if it's on, yeah. Just to make sure New Year's, the holiday is covered. If, if that does get amended, maybe.
Yeah, we can, if somebody can pull up a calendar, we could say January 3rd or 5th or whatever, so that it, it's smooth, the transition is smooth.
New Year's is a Monday, so were that to be your goal, you might consider, I'm sorry, New Year's is a Saturday. The following Monday is January 3rd, that might be a good day, were that the council's desire.
Okay, that's my motion, January 3rd.
Okay. And, and that also includes fitness, those fitness classes? All right, I'll second that motion.
Right.
Can we have a vote, please, Gail?
Which, we're voting on the substitute motion?
Substitute motion is voted first. If it passes, it replaces and overrides the underlying motion, and that would be the action of the council. If it fails, then we, we would proceed to vote on the original motion. The desire will be as the council majority goes.
Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yeah.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. And then moving on to our next subject is?
No, we have to vote on the underlying motion now.
No.
That was the amendment, right?
That was a substitute motion. Councilmember Francina ran it as a substitute motion, which replaces the underlying motion, not.
I'm sorry, I stand corrected. I stand corrected, thank you.
Thank you.
And could I, Mayor Sticks, I could ask the city manager something?
Sure.
Right. So in this period through the end of the year, are we going to review the original emergency permits to make sure that people are in compliance?
Yeah, so that's what we'll do, is we'll review the permits that we've issued and make sure that, and we've started to do that, but we'll make sure to do that between now and June 15th, and make sure that everybody's complying with those permits, and then make sure we know who wants to extend them, and we'll, we'll issue an extended permit to those people that want to extend it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. All right, let's move on to number three, the budget report, our workshop, second budget workshop.
Thank you. I, I, following kind of how we did last budget workshop, I think because it's such a volatile financial period due to the impacts of COVID, we were, we wanted to bring this item as kind of, to help set the stage for the next budget workshop, where we're, where I think we will really get more hands-on with it. But, you know, it's, we were talking about how, you know, the budget this year had, and I can go to the slide and show this, but the budget this year had this huge swing from where we adopted the budget at 10.4 million to where it's going to end up, which is closer to 8.8 or 8.9 million. And so we realized that, I think a big question right now from everybody is just like, what are we looking at next year? You know, what, what, what's the big picture? And then kind of understanding that, and then being able to get more into, into the details. So we wanted to bring this item that includes a few categories. It includes the capital improvement projects, it includes Measure C, it includes the equipment and vehicle replacement funds. And just kind of follow up on last week where we talked about the general fund as a big picture, and now it's going to be talking about these other funds and projects as, as sort of a big picture. And I think partly because if it wasn't for, for example, Measure C, we probably wouldn't have much money this year after these impacts to really do much of anything. And so a big part of this report will focus on the positive impact of having Measure C and what that will allow us to do next year. So, so with that, just quickly, I'll kind of recap what we found last, or what we went through last week, our last council meeting. We showed how our budget had dropped from 10.4 million to almost 8.9 million. And then we also showed the impact of this American Rescue Plan Act funding that we are expecting to get in two payments over this year and next year, that will help us. We had pretty much balanced the budget this year by making some reductions, and that'll help us kind of recover from even further. And then next year, it'll help us kind of close the gap as we try to start ramping up and getting back to normal staff levels and, and normal work. So, so that's kind of the, the general fund in a nutshell. We are going to make some adjustments, and I'll just kind of preview that here by noting that we talked last meeting about how property tax came in lower than expected in the first payment, which came in in December. The good news that happened since that last council meeting is that the second payment at the end of, or the beginning of May came in, and the second payment ended up including a lot of the deferrals from the, that had reduced the first payment. So it actually ended up putting us back on the projection and actually a little bit better than projected. And so next budget workshop, we'll bring back an adjusted budget with that property tax, and that'll help close that gap from that 150,000 to, to, to much less of a gap than that. And then we'll include some of the adjustments that we, that council discussed and gave feedback on at that time. So I won't get too into the general fund because it's not the intent tonight, but I, we just wanted to preview that we'll come back with some positive changes at the next meeting. Today, what we want to talk about are the capital improvement projects and Measure C. Capital improvement projects, there's a lot of overlap, and it gets confusing. And even we realized in our staff report, we didn't necessarily help with that because we kind of talked about those two things interchangeably, when they really aren't interchangeable. Measure C projects, Measure C, just for anybody watching that isn't familiar, is our 5% hotel tax increase, which can be used for capital improvement projects, but also other types of projects that we specified, like climate mitigation, our climate change mitigation projects, fire prevention projects, and a couple other categories, code enforcement. And so there's a lot of overlap, but it's not necessarily one in the same, and we'll show that later in a slide. But so the CIP, the capital improvement projects include those Measure C funds, which is the, a, a big chunk of it, almost a million dollars. It includes the TOT transfer, which in, when we talked about the budget this year, we identified that as something that the council may consider reducing or eliminating. But as of right now, there's $176,000 that would be transferred over from TOT to CIP to fund these projects. Grants and other sources such as the gas tax. And so all of those categories of funding go into and make up the capital improvement projects. As I mentioned a minute ago, the proposed budget that we went through last week included a 6% TOT transfer, or $178,000. So that's reflected here, although it may be removed based on next, depending on next council meeting's discussion. The CIP budget is anticipated to total $3 million between those sources, with $1 million for Measure C, $178,000 for the general fund TOT transfer, and the remainder from the grants or other funds. And so we, in, in the packet, we have a in-depth thorough set of spreadsheets. We tried to really simplify it for this presentation, so we can walk through it fairly quickly. This chart shows the total amount of each project that's included in the CIP. And then it include, or it breaks it down into what's Measure C funded and what's funded by other funds. And then it says in that source column what that other fund is. And so just quickly to explain that maybe better, street paving this year, we are planning to pave, are to fund $906,000 in street paving. $600,000 of that comes from Measure C, and then $306,000 comes from the gas tax and AB 939. And I think for us, the, the main thing, and obviously, you know, council will provide feedback, but we had heard all through the work on Measure C that one of the priorities was to catch up on paving. This year, I think, had we not passed Measure C, we wouldn't have been able to do probably any paving. And so this was something we tried to really keep focus on, that we would continue to make progress and catch up on paving. I think it was two years ago, we said that we were about 30 years behind on paving and, and or it would take us something like 30 years to catch up at the current rate. We're trying to increase that level of funding and focus on this, so that we get that down to about a 15-year cycle. So in this budget that's before you, we propose $906,000 going to street paving. Just to kind of quickly rock, rock, walk through this, the active transportation project, the ATP project, is funded at about $862,000 next year. All of that comes from grants. And so that's reflected here where it says not applicable for Measure C, and then it says 862,000 in other funds, with the source being grants. So that will be completely grant-funded, and we are not spending any city funds on that per council direction. The Stewart Canyon Restoration Project, one of the nice things about Measure C is this allows us to match grants that we otherwise would not have had money to match, especially this year. So that's reflected here where we're anticipating $508,000 worth of work on that restoration project, and only $42,000 is coming from Measure C, with the rest of it coming from grants, over $460,000. So that shows really where Measure C is really allowing us to leverage this funding into some major projects for the city that have multiple.
So James, that's matching funds, right? That's what I'm hearing?
Yep, the 42,000 is matching funds.
And how much did we have to match for this grant?
I believe, so it was a $1 million grant total, and I believe we matched, I want to say it was $98,000 over five years.
That's the number I remember, Randy, 98,000.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering, that's why, so this is almost half of that.
Yeah, yeah. And that's, you know, the first two years are going to be the heavy years, and then the third, fourth, and fifth year, it's just maintenance. But these, the last year and this year was the pulling out, you know, pull, pull, clearing everything out, and then replanting and restoring. and then replanting and restoring. So this is going to be a heavy year on that. The other, the next item as an example is the multi.
James, just, just a bit of, I want to make sure I'm clear on that. I believe the, the pulling out of the invasive species is actually not going to be finished until the next fiscal year.
Yes, but I just, the first two years are the, the heavy year.
Oh, you mean the first two fiscal years?
Yeah, yeah, the first two fiscal years are the, the two big years. The rest is kind of just maintenance, with, you know, lower level work there.
Right.
So this outdoor multi-sport court, and I want to actually show this real quick because I think we've kind of forgotten about it with everything else going on. But this was the outdoor basketball and hardtop soccer that it was planned for Sarzati as part of the master plan. So I just wanted to kind of remind people what this is. This is Sarzati with those two courts here, which will replace our broken down, beat up basketball court in the parking lot. Finally, so we are excited about this one. Here's another rendering of, of what it's going to look like, although the path will come later. But this year in the CIP, again, Measure C, a little bit of Measure C funding, $22,000 will allow us to apply for, we've gotten one of the grants and we're applying for the second, which would be $305,000 to complete that project and installation. And finally, make progress on the Sarzati Park Master Plan, which I think is, it's time to start making progress on that.
Mr. Vega, I have a question on the court.
Sure.
Project. Several years ago, it was pretty well advocated by the Park and Rec Commission that, and analyzed that the dumpster enclosure at the entrance to the parking area or that would serve this multi-sport area creates a real problem with ingress and egress. And there was supposedly a commitment to be looking at changing that dumpster enclosure bottleneck. This is only going to increase the, the use of that parking area, making the problem worse unless we address the problem of moving that dumpster enclosure area that creates that bottleneck. Have we, are we going to incorporate that issue into this project?
That's a good question. Eric, that's a good reminder. I remember that discussion as well. We'll, we'll make sure to follow up on that and, and identify if that's included in this or I don't think it is. And so we may have to come back with the, you know, with the potential addition there. And I don't think it would be much, but, but it's not, this funding that we mentioned, the 327,000 is particularly building the courts. That's what that's going towards.
Right. And I, what I'm trying to say is we're, we, we don't want to have an unintended consequence. There's going to be a lot of interest in using these courts and they're all going to be, a lot of them are going to be parking in that, that long linear area there.
Yeah, yeah. I, we'll, we'll bring that back as a, as a potential addition of what, what that will cost. I don't think it would be much.
Or where it moves, it gets moved to.
Yeah.
Yes, Randy?
Yeah, James, also, you know, there's probably nine to 12 feet of dirt adjacent to that existing parking lot. And if we're thinking of removing that trash shelter, the bin storage shelter, that we might think about what it's going to cost to do an AC patch. Again, because of the enhanced usage of that corner in that area of the park, I think it'd be, at least getting a number would be beneficial.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, we'll come back with, with that information. And I think it was either on tonight's agenda or the last meeting, we brought the resolutions that we could apply for that second grant. So we'll also look at if there's an opportunity there to fund it. So. So I'll, I'll try to go through these a little more quicker, but those were the four big ones. So some of the remainders of the projects, we did include budget for solar panels. We've been working on that for a couple of years, but we never had the funding to really do it. And, you know, we'll look at options like the power purchase agreements, but we wanted to make sure we had some funding identified. So we have $140,000 from Measure C for solar panels at City Hall, whether those are over the parking lot or, you know, at another location, we'll, we'll work on that. So 140,000 for solar panels for Measure C, $80,000 for fiber optic conduit in Measure C. And, you know, that could take a couple of forms, but again, it's a project we've talked about for years, but we never had earmarked funding for it. So this year, Measure C is allowing us to do that. We have some drainage improvements to meet MS4 requirements, that's $60,000. And you can see here that that is not for Measure C, it's from the drainage fund. And so that's just, it's not very exciting, but it's an improvement that we would make using the drainage fund. We have $35,000 in sidewalk repairs. That is recommended to be funded for Measure C. We have $38,000 in roof repairs, which include several facilities. The arcade, the void center, the gazebo, and City Hall. 29,000 of that would be for Measure C with 9,000 coming from the plaza fund. That would be the arcade roof repairs. We have 10,000 earmarked or recommended for Grand Avenue bike lanes. And I believe the 10,000 would be for the design part of that project. And that, those funds would come from TDA grant funds. The skate, skate park shade, we have $10,000 recommended. The Parks and Rec Commission had identified that as, as a need. And that's just the, you know, simple shades at the skate park like this. So we have $10,000 recommended for Measure C for that. We have $28,000 recommended, 3,000 for Measure C, 25,000 from grants for trolley stop improvements at two of the trolley stops. And we have $28,000 with 20,000 of that coming from Measure C for the speed survey we talked about a couple of months back, the potential.
Sorry, I'm on mute. I have a question.
Sure.
On the previous item.
Sure.
The trolley stop improvement match, I just want to make sure that it finally includes shade cover for the trolley stop. We've got a Bank of America, because I asked about that four years ago.
It does include improvements at Bank of America. And I was trying to remember the second location, but Bank of America was one of them, yes. The Bank of America stop.
So there'll be a, a cover over the bench?
I believe so, but I'll confirm that.
Yes, I think it's really, really important. It is such a hot, heat island over there. And I see parents with children and people just sitting there looking like they're going to have a heat stroke.
Yeah, it's, it's a shade cover at the Bank of America trolley stop and at the hospital is the other one.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So again, you know, and that's the thing, I think that's our takeaway is when you mentioned something we wanted to do for four years, I think Measure C hasn't come in as quickly and as much as we had hoped or expected with the impacts of COVID. But I think it's still important to note how many things that we're going to be able to do this year in a, a very difficult budget that we're able to do because of that, because of Measure C being implemented by the city and the city council back before all this happened. So it's finally, you know, it's paying, paying off at this point.
Mayor Sticks, I have a question for the city manager.
James.
Yeah.
On circling back to the overlay project map. And again, I, I stand to be corrected, but if, if memory serves, that section of Keiama that's in red for 2021 proposed paving, isn't that section part of the, included in the multimodal bike trail master plan?
That section of Keiama, I believe so, yes.
And my question, if it is, and we know, we've been alluding to master plans before. You know, we, we've kind of never really talked about this in a long time, but that is part of the master plan we adopted. So we're talking about a section of road which is much narrower than the right of way. And we have a master plan that that's supposed to be a, a bike trail area. And it seems to me that, you know, I have two comments. The first comment is that when we're doing street overlays that are coextensive with our bike trail master plan, we ought to be addressing how to design with consistency with that adopted master plan.
Yeah.
Thought is something to bring up. You know, you, we see a lot of people on bikes and pedestrians that are very impacted by the fact that there is no multi-way, multi-modal way of going through that area that's been designated for multimodality. The other point, I want, you know, the other part that was recently done on Keiama is much wider than this area, but the right of way is the same width all the way through it. The other point I want to bring up is that I think we ought to just check and see if there's any overlap with the in-stream flow studies. That if we're doing a, a, a street work in an area that has been identified as potential for, by the in-stream flow assessment grant, as, you know, again, co-extensive with, with recharge potential, we ought to give consideration to including that in the street program as part of the overall hardscape redesign. So I just wanted to bring up those two points that we ought to be looking at the, the full planning perspective.
Yeah.
When we're, we're doing these street overlays.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think we, we will kind of cross-check it with that master plan and make sure that we're, that we're coordinating that. So.
And, and the in-stream flow to see if some of the specific recharge sites are co. I don't really have the memory of any, but I believe some of them are up there around Pleasant, as, as I recall.
Yeah, yeah, they were, which is one of the areas we're looking at paving this year.
And, and that's part of our city's commitment to sustainability. And I just think we ought to be cognizant of that.
Yeah.
James, you want to finish and then take questions or just keep taking questions?
That's about it in a nutshell. I think the, the, you know, the, probably the big topic is the paving. And I kind of skipped, skipped ahead to that. But what we proposed this year is we, if the funding remains where we're expecting it to be, that we would do this 2021 proposed paving, which is the solid red. And that's 9, 9,300 linear feet. But we actually are feeling pretty confident, the way things have been going the last couple of months, that we may, the hotel tax may end up being more than we projected, which also means that Measure C goes up with that, you know, proportionally. And so what we would propose is the 2022 proposed paving, and that's why we highlighted it. If funding exceeds what we are projecting right now, that we would come back to council to add the 2022 paving and try to catch up and do, you know, two years at that point. And that would be the solid red and the checkered red or the dashed red. And in the packet and on this slide, we list the streets that are, you know, that that includes or that are included in, in the paving this year. And so I think, I expect there may be questions about this. So with that, oh. Well, let me, let me add one thing, which is Measure C, I kind of went over it a lot. But just quickly, we, we anticipate that we'll end, or that we'll receive about 1.2 million dollars this year. We are projecting almost 1.4 million dollars next year, but that looks like it is, like that may be increasing based on the recent reports. And the only thing I want to point out is Measure C is going to a lot of those projects we just talked about. But two additional projects that are not CIP projects are, we're designating 100,000 for tree maintenance and, and tree pruning. And we're designating $90,000 to that enhanced code enforcement. And so with that, that's the summary of CIP and Measure C, and I'm happy to answer any questions on that.
Thank you, James. Thanks for waiting, Randy. Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I always enjoy this conversation about bike lanes and, and the arbalotta. But I would suggest that we hold some type of a public hearing and actually inform the arbalotta community of what the proposal is so that we can get their feedback before we start widening streets there. That's just my take on it. Remember, this council agreed a couple councils back that if you built on the public right of way, that it's okay and it's fine until we need it, and then we're just going to take it back. So again, I encourage us to actually have a public hearing on this and, and actually bring the public, especially the arbalotta public, into this discussion and get their input. So that's one of the comments I want to make. I agree with Councilman Wierig's assessment. I'm just saying that you can't screen this on people, you better inform them and you better get their buy-in. The other thing too, so James, a lot of this, a lot of the information that we're provided still gives us the opportunity to move monies around and to look at priorities and, and address, again, some of the other community needs that we're looking forward to. Rather than getting into that tonight, we're going to come back one more time for one more presentation. Is that what I'm hearing before adoption?
Yes. And, you know, of course, if council wants to give some of that feedback now, that's fine. But we were planning that we would have one more hearing on June 8th, where we'd bring it all and, and kind of, you know, go through it and make any modifications.
Would, would you have any, would you have any projections on future monies coming in by then that you don't have right now?
We have, we have a couple of positive updates that we will put in, like in writing for that June 8th hearing, where, like I said, property tax came in higher than expected. That'll be reflected. And there's a couple of other little things like the, the general plan restricted fund. We, we made sure to include that and that changes the bottom line a little bit to the positive. But, so it's a couple of things like that that'll show a reduction in that deficit that we projected. So that'll be the update at the next meeting.
My last comment, Mayor, is I'm sure that all of us want to take care of all of the needs of the community. It's just how we go about allocating those funds to do that. So I look forward to that next discussion.
Any other questions for staff? Bill?
I, I, I thought we were in a comment period where.
No, any public comment on this item?
Yes, we have one public comment. I can bring him in. It's Mr. Miley.
Thank you.
Mr. Miley, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm here.
Okay, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I don't, I don't have any suggestions to add anything to the report. But I have a few likes that I would like to, especially, special likes that I'd like to mention. Under the street section, the two that I especially like is the money put into speed, the, the speed survey and also the speed radar. I like them. Under the climate mitigation, the care for the trees, the solar panels, the electric public works cart with a bed. I do have a question. I, I want to know whether that's a twin bed or a king bed. That's a joke. I know what kind of.
I got it. It took a minute.
I especially like the skate park shade structure, the fiber optic broadband conduit, the outdoor Sarzati Park multi-sport court, courts, the trip hazard, the trip hazard reduction program, the wildfire mitigation, the middle Stewart Canyon restoration, City Hall solar panels with batteries. We build the council chambers AV recording system. And in summary, I found that the capital improvement program as proposed, the way it was presented, displayed, was well done. And I found it very easy to read. And I want to compliment city manager and those who participated in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Good joke. Thank you. All right, we're ready for discussion on this item? Bill?
Yeah, I want to make a couple of suggestions since this is a five-year plan. The CIP program is a five-year plan. So given the five-year perspective, I want to make sure everyone knows I'm not pushing necessarily for right now. But in terms of a line item in the five-year plan, I think we ought to be thinking about electric bike chargers, chargers, stations, charging stations on the Valley Bike Trail. You know, that's going to be, we're seeing more and more of electric bike use, e-bike use. Class one and class two can be on the, used on the Valley Bike Trail. I, I, at least maybe, you know, in the five-year plan, be thinking of that as a line item to promote people that want to come from, you know, possibly medium distances to, rather than in cars, to Ojai and then be able to. people that want to come from, you know, possibly medium distances to, rather than in cars, to Ojai and then be able to charge before they go home. I think it's the kind of thinking we need to move into and towards. The other point I would like to make is that when we have, I think we need to start thinking more when we're doing solar and roof. We should start to integrate solar and roof into our multi-year CIP where rather than having them be separately, really like that roof at Sarzati, the gym, I mean, that's a huge expanse. It'd be a shame to be roofing, be re-roofing without looking at integrating solar into that kind of project. It's just a, again, a multi-year perspective that I think we ought to be looking at anytime we're doing roofing projects. I mean, there's even tile that are solar, you know, that look like tile that are now solar cells, you know, those kinds of things. Doesn't have to be necessarily a patch on. And the other thing I think, again, from a multi-year perspective is that as we look at increasing our programming and usage of the area behind City Hall and the community garden area, at some point, we're going to need a proper restroom installation. And I mean, we can't have an outhouse forever. I, you know, we're going to have, for example, a lot of kids, you know, educational field trips we're talking about and things like that. I hate that we, you know, well, there's the, there's the outhouse on the trailer for you guys. I think we need to be, it is part of Libby Park, and I think we need to be, I believe we have a sewer along the Ventura Avenue there. And I believe there's a fair amount of opportunities. It could also be a model part of our climate park in terms of gray water and black water use. So I just think it ought to be put into the five-year perspective capital improvement program. That's my, my request.
Thank you. And I think for these five-year requests, yeah, that's, when we bring this back next meeting, we'll show some of those added on to those future years and some places council can give feedback on.
Okay. Souza? When you bring this back, James?
Yeah.
How, how would you feel about separating climate mitigation and fire protection? And just because I have items that I would like to consider at the next meeting, but it just would get too long and it's, and I don't know what your logic was to put it together. But I strongly feel that it should be separated and climate mitigation could, under that, there could be the subtitles of emission reduction and carbon sequestration to see what we're doing on that front.
Yeah, separating those two, that's, that can be done simply, the climate mitigation versus, you know, separate it from fire protection. What was the second part you said?
If you said, and then under climate mitigation, you could have the subtitles emissions reduction and carbon sequestration. And that way we could all clarify what we're doing on those two emergency fronts.
Okay. Yeah, we could do that. Yeah, we can, we'll do that and then we can take feedback on that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that because those two, you know, sequestration and the greenhouse gas reduction, that is climate mitigation, those two items, so to clarify. Randy?
Well, again, we're, I think separating a lot of this is actually good. Again, when you get into the Libby Park, there's no segregation of what we're doing on the backside of the facility. There was no name for it in here. There's no funding mechanism for it. And that's something that we should be looking into again as we move forward. And we start evaluating and hopefully creating a master plan for the back of that facility. So again, you got to have a funding mechanism. It can't all just be pie in the sky and a guess. You need to have some resources so that you can design to them. So.
Phil?
Yeah, I would concur with that. It's time for a line item for the community garden, one item being a restroom. But there's other needs. Another point I want to make, I've always been a little uncomfortable with having things labeled maintenance in the capital improvement program budget.
Yeah.
By definition, capital improvement is, are things that have at least a one-year life, I think. And, you know, maintenance, it's not a matter of, it's more of a, it's not a matter of a, you know, saving money or adding money. It's just a matter of how you classify for financial reporting purposes.
Yeah.
And maintenance is maintenance. It's not a capital improvement. And I noticed there was, I think, 32,000 for maintenance mentioned in the staff report. I just like consideration to be given that those be part of, maintenance is an operating budget item, not a capital improvement program.
Yeah, yeah, and most of those were a label problem, so we'll fix the label. That, that 32,000 includes like the City Hall roof repair.
Well, okay.
And, you know, a couple, not the void, but the arcade roof repair. So those were bad labels. The other one, the tree maintenance, though, I agree, we just need to pull it from CIP. It's not really a CIP item. So we'll list that as a Measure C item.
Ryan?
I was just going to say, in general, the CIP budget looks woeful. I mean, it says fire protection, but I'm not sure any of that's really fire protection. I suppose tree maintenance might be, circuiting restoration project really isn't most, it's really about in-stream flow more than is about fire protection. It feels like we are significantly under-invested in fire protection issues. I mean, it almost looks like that's a label on there, and I'm not sure what actually falls under that category.
Yeah.
Is it protection or mitigation? I hear what you're saying, Ryan.
Well, whatever, you know, semantically, I'm not, you know, financially, I'm concerned, semantically not. Definitely, it's always, it's always mitigation. You can never protect any, you know, community from fire, but from a general standpoint, it doesn't look like, it doesn't look like we're investing much, if anything, in real fire protection in any way.
Well, we have the fuel reduction and Stewart Canyon.
Yeah, but Stewart Canyon is an in-stream flow grant. It happens, that's like a byproduct of it. It's, and it's not a, it's not the keyest area for, for that being in the center of town. If, if we mitigate a fire in Stewart Canyon, we're already in deep trouble.
Souza?
Oh, I was just going to suggest in interest of time, because it's nine o'clock, that maybe we could wind this up because we're going to come back to it, if everyone else is okay with that. I'm just worried that we're not going to get to everything by 10, by 9:30.
And we'll have our third.
10:30, I mean.
On June 8th, correct, James?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, James. Really appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, and then we're moving on to number four, which is the general plan update. Please.
Yeah, and I'll keep it brief. We do have, we have one of the consultants from Raimian Associates, who is our contract firm who's helping us through the general plan update. And he has a brief presentation. But essentially, let me just introduce it by noting, so one of the first big steps is to adopt, adopt a vision and guiding principles statement on behalf of the city. You know, this vision and guiding principles statement will help us, will just help guide the whole general plan process. And so it really needs to be a accurate, thought-out statement of our community. And so we held our public workshops over, I think it was January and March. We got feedback. We drafted the statements with that feedback from those workshops. And then we took it, and people may have watched, a couple of weeks ago, we took it to the planning commission, and the planning commission spent, I would, I, offhand, I think it was probably two to three hours working through this and making sure that this statement really accurately reflects our community. And so that, that's kind of how we got to here. Now the step that we're here for is to have city council review that guiding principles, statement, vision and guiding principles statement, and hopefully adopt it. And then that will be used as we continue to develop our general plan update and continue to move it forward. So with that, I will hand it over to Ron, who will give some background on it and on the general plan update process.
Thank you, James, and good evening, Mayor Stix, council members. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep, we got you, Ron.
Yeah, I'm going to share my screen as well. And you see the slide presentation well?
Yep.
Okay. Again, it's good to see many of you. I had a chance to talk with some of you last fall when we kicked off the public engagement process. It's good to see you again and nice to meet you, those of you who we didn't have a chance to interview. I'm going to try to keep this short and sweet. I know it's been a long meeting and you have additional agenda items. But we'd like to briefly cover this evening as a very quick update on where we're at in the general plan update process. Briefly explain how we identified drivers of change, both through some baseline existing conditions research, as well as some community input. And how we used that work to inform the development of vision and guiding principles. We'll introduce those to you, explain how they'll be used in subsequent steps of the planning process, and then invite you to consider approving the draft vision and guiding principles. I imagine you're very familiar with the general plan and refer to it on a regular basis, particularly when we're considering a variety of land use decisions. But high level, it's intended to provide long-range guidance for and policy to inform decisions about future actions, particularly around land use and investments in infrastructure and facilities. And if done well, it captures nicely the community's strengths, addresses topics of current concern, and in the process, brings the community together to identify the shared vision for the future. And ideally serves not just as a policy document then for the city, but also serves as a rallying point for community to implement the plan, not just through legislation and policy implementation, but also through a variety of community-based efforts. The current Ojai general plan elements are on your left. This is a focused update to your general plan, focusing on the five elements on the right, land use, circulation, housing, safety, and environmental justice. It's, at a high level, a five-phase process. We're just concluding the second phase, the visioning phase. During phase one, we did a lot of listening and learning, as I mentioned. We use that and plus inputs from a workshop to develop a draft vision and guiding principles, which will then serve as the foundation for the remainder of the planning process. First, to inform development of alternatives for Ojai's future and to inform the selection of a preferred alternative. And then also to inform the development of specific goals, policies, and implementation actions during the policy and plan development phase. All in preparation for bringing those land use infrastructure components along with a policy together in a complete plan for your review and adoption next year. Throughout that process, we have extensive community engagement, which I'll speak to a bit in a moment. Speaking of which, we've already done a considerable amount of outreach, provided information about the general plan update, the purpose of the general plan in terms of community development, conducted interviews, a variety of small group meetings, had two surveys in the fall, and then recently, as James mentioned, a community visioning workshop. We have two additional workshops coming up in the future. One will be over the summer, focused specifically on development and assessment of alternatives for Ojai's future. And then one later in the process to help evaluate the draft general plan. The city does a good job of keeping the project's website up to date with the latest products of the planning process and updates about the planning process itself and opportunities for people to stay involved. As I mentioned, phase one was really, had two parts to it. One was a community engagement aspect. We held two surveys. One was a mapping exercise. You see an example of the outputs from that on the left. The other was a Survey Monkey survey asking about issues, opportunities, and people's vision for the future in Ojai. Both those reports are available on the project website and were used extensively to help inform development of the vision and guiding principles. Just so you know, the existing conditions reports covered a number of topics and focused primarily on the five elements that are being updated through the general plan update. Land use, mobility, the environment, health, and equity. And they're really a snapshot in time of what the current state of affairs is, designed to identify clearly what topics need to be addressed through the general plan update. Those reports are also available on the project website and inform the development of vision and guiding principles. So building on phase one, we then launched into phase two, and it really started, well, let me backtrack. So the outputs of phase two, the products really are designed to answer the question, what does general plan success look like for Ojai? Specifically for the topics that are the focus of the focused update, land use, housing, transportation, and safety. And then specifically to craft a vision statement and guiding principles. And the purpose of the vision statement is to clearly and concisely describe the desired character and conditions in Ojai through the planning horizon 2045. And the guiding principles are designed to establish the direction, provide some directionality that should be followed to achieve the city's vision. And just so you know, we took a very systematic approach to drafting the vision and guiding principles. We reviewed all of the work that had been done, the existing conditions reports, all of the public engagement. And then gleaned from each of them qualities to preserve, opportunities to capitalize on, challenges to address, and changes to advance by each of the five topics that are the focus of the general plan update. Here's the vision that was slightly revised by the planning commission. We often find it helpful to read these, so if you bear with me, I'll read this really quickly. And this, again, is designed to concisely articulate what the people of Ojai would like to see for their community, how they describe the ideal community in 2045. So Ojai is a quaint, eclectic, and diverse small town whose unique character is reflected in its vibrant downtown, historic architecture, and abundant natural beauty. Its residents are a mosaic of people of all ages, backgrounds, perspectives, and income levels who celebrate each other's differences and enjoy equitable access to services and opportunity. Together, they take pride in being a beacon of sustainability through their commitment to conserving natural resources and taking bold action to mitigate and adapt to climate change. Community's unwavering support for small, locally-owned businesses also sustains an economy that prioritizes human and ecological needs above all else. We don't have the text of the guiding principles for you in the slide deck, but I believe you have a copy of the proposed vision and guiding principles in front of you. But they boil down into these eight topics, which again, provide some more specific directionality to what pathways to follow to achieve the vision that I just read through. And just so you're clear on how this document, these vision and guiding principles, will be used further in the planning process. The, in the next, the second arrow from the top there, the surveys and drivers of change will, in addition to informing the vision and guiding principles, will also be used to identify areas of stability and change, which will be another piece that will be developed over the summer, which will come together with the vision and principles to inform the plan alternatives workshop in the summer, the product of which will be a preferred alternative. All those then will be brought together, as I mentioned earlier, in the draft general plan in the fall and be reviewed again by the community during a general plan open house. So it's very much a building block incremental approach to crafting a plan, piece by piece. Each subsequent step now, building on the foundation of the vision and guiding principles. That's all I had for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions about how we got here or why certain language was chosen or where it may have come from. Again, as James mentioned, the planning commission was very vigilant in its review and refinement of the drafts. It was before them. And I believe you have a redline version, so you see the outputs of their hard work.
Thank you, Ron. Any questions for Ron? Souza?
Ron, it feels like what you've given us is a prelude to a three-hour special workshop. So what are we expected to do in the 15 minutes or so that we have, or half hour at most, because we have three, two or three other items? I would like clarity on what you. I would like clarity on what you, what the council. I'm not ready to, I can't just, I'm not clear on what we're expected to do in the amount of time that we have. And my future recommendation is that items like this, I'm so more than willing to always come to a special meeting on anything to do with the general plan. So, yeah.
So I'll take that one, Ron. I think, I think what we were hoping and what we expect is we're hoping to use the Planning Commission to do those three-hour deep dives. And so that the city council does not have to do the three-hour deep dives. And so, so what we're asking is that Attachment A is the vision and guiding principles that the Planning Commission worked on for three hours. And so we're asking just hopefully for, you know, a quick review and then an adoption. But if the, if there are issues and if we're not comfortable adopting it, we can bring it back at another meeting. But we were trying to use that, the Planning Commission review to really make, make it so that this is a simple streamlined process.
I did watch the whole meeting and they really worked hard, I have to say. Yeah.
Exactly.
Well, I would just.
Well, Bill has a question. This, we're still asking questions for staff. Thank you.
Yeah, I specifically like to ask how you want to handle feedback from council. I've got a number of points that I wanted more clarity on and some suggestions. So I'm not ready to vote to adopt because I have some deliberative issues that I have that I want to explore. And I think the council should explore in deliberation before we adopt. So in the interest of time, I'm asking for what might be the way forward, you know, in substitute for an adoption tonight. And I wasn't sure how we want to handle this when I saw the agenda item. But perhaps we, you know, each of us do a, maybe a write-up of our responses to the city manager and to Mr. Whitmore and go back and forth a little bit before, because I'm just, I'm not ready to adopt this as written tonight. And I, and I think we should have an opportunity for feedback at the council level because we're the ultimate responsible party for this.
We're still on questions. Is that another question, Randy? You're on mute. Can you unmute yourself, Randy?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's interesting. Again, I'm not going to adopt anything like this. We've adopted too many things in the, in the dark of night that have come back to haunt us, so I'm not ready to adopt anything. In fact, there's words in here I would like clarification on, you know, what does this mean? What does that mean? What's a balanced economy and how do you plan to achieve it? So there's a multitude of questions here that have to be answered. And then the other part of it is, again, as I look at the numbers, we live in a community of 7,500 people, and Ron, this isn't on you. This is just on the community and I hope they're listening. But only 300 people participated, with only 63% of the 300 coming from Ojai. So again, this lacks the depth of character that we need to understand from our community. We don't have enough input. So again, if we're jumping to conclusions on what we want this general plan to be or take us to, we've got to figure out how to get more involved or how to communicate it more. And the Planning Commission is probably a good starting point. But again, how many people actually spoke at the planning session in relationship to the number in our community? 0, 0, 0, 1%? So we've got to figure out how to get this out there because we're, we're creating the destiny for this community and it shouldn't be five people. And it shouldn't be five commissioners. And it shouldn't be 300. It should be a lot more than that.
We're still on questions. This is a question, Bill?
Oh, no, I was, no.
Is there any public comment on this item, Gail?
Yes, we have two speakers. Do you want me to bring them in?
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay, the first is Bill Miley. Mr. Miley, you should be able to speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead.
I am here. I'm one of those 300 of us. So I have a, one of the things that happened is that the email version that I got does not have a redlined version. All it has is what appears to be the draft document that went to the Planning Commission. So I can't comment on that. But what I want to comment is, on the section, I want to comment on the abbreviation SWOT. I like that. Strengths, weaknesses, opportunity, and threats. Under strengths, I would like to add historical roots which stay in the present, we keep in the present, we keep remembering. Mediterranean climate, I think, is a strength. Weaknesses, I'd like to add being dependent on tourism, being water limitations, and being dependent on vehicle travel for this town. Under opportunity, I would like to add geography. The valley is just a super thing to deal with. Moderate weather and opportunity to, we need to plant many more trees in this valley to help keep it shaded and cool and nice. And under threats, obviously, climate change, too many vehicles. And I would like to say out-of-area property owners, including houses. Okay, now for the REMI vision and guiding principles, some suggested changes. First line, I suggest to remove the word quaint. I don't think, it's not us, and when you look in the dictionary, quaint is considered mostly a critical word. I would like to suggest adding new adjectives like historic, and that's what we build on, picturesque, which we are, and unusual and attractive, we are both. Give you an example, when you come into Ojai from the Y and you come down and you look at the whole town from Clef Park, it's gorgeous. First line, second paragraph, remove the phrase, "we are a mosaic of all people." We are not that. Suggest we are a mosaic of many people. And I have two favorite ads that I'd like to put into the rest of the document. One, add EV chargers in many new places to support the decreasing fossil fuel vehicle need. I'd like to second Bill Wirex's comment about adding electric bike chargers. And last, make sure that new affordable housing has a priority for workforce housing for folks who have jobs within our city. It's important that we don't add affordable housing for people who don't live here now and don't work here now. We're going to live here and commute. That's what we shouldn't do. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley.
Great comments.
Really good, as always. Much appreciated. One more comment?
Yes, the next person we have is Wendy Lerner, and I will bring her in. Wendy, you should be able to speak now. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you yet again. I am encouraging the council to uphold the subsidiarity principle of our constitutional republic. In other words, and I hear strains of that in some conversations. In other words, higher government authorities should not do anything that lower authorities can do for themselves. That was reflected in our conversation on COVID. A few comments on the general plan. I don't know if the ATP development was part of that. If so, and you'll have to decide if I'm wrong about this, it outpaced the general plan schedule and during all the COVID-related restrictions, all of this came to pass at a time that was very difficult for people to get involved and make their, their sense of what they'd like to be done, heard. It's already been moved forward with grant restricted actions that are going to be put in place. This should not have begun until late June if it was part of the general plan. The vision statement was, I believe, partially derived from the community, but it seems like it was manipulated perhaps by the Planning Commission with vocabulary that's more common to planners. I noticed that the guiding principles seem to be coming top-down rather than using a democratic process, like a vote of the people, which is a democratic process. Consensus building with small numbers is not a democratic process. The powers that be, the federal, the state, non-governmental organizations, and with vested interests, they're conveniently supplying, I think, our consultants, many towns' consultants, I don't know if they have ours, and have really manipulated a few people by the way things are presented to them. There's a Delphi technique at visioning meetings that is often used and the survey questions seem directed to get particular answers. Consensus is not the way American government is supposed to make decisions. I guess that's all I have to say now, and I will not speak again tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. We appreciate your, your engagement in the process. So we're ready to move to discussion. Bill?
I'd like to just sort of quickly suggest that we continue any adoption to allow time for each council member to submit written suggestions, comments, revisions, whatever, to the, to Mr. Whitmore and to the city manager. And also that we make sure that we highlight what's before us for adoption. Basically, the two pages, Attachment A, probably make sure they're very highlighted on the, easily commented on by the public on the general plan link on the city website. I think that would be a good step forward because, like Randy, I'm not ready to vote to adopt anything tonight. I have a number of comments, but I don't want to get into spending a lot of time debating that or deliberating on that tonight. That's my suggestion is that we continue this with, and we all individually express ourselves upon looking at this. We make sure that it's prominently and efficiently posted for general public comment on the, on the general plan update site.
Yeah, and I think I hear consensus from a majority that, that we should, we can do that. We can take that feedback and then we can bring it back with, with some modifications at the next meeting.
And the one point I'll note is that all of the emails that may be sent by council members to the city manager and to Mr. Whitmore regarding this document are public and is available for public review so that every member of the public can see, just as if we had had a discussion for a few more hours here tonight, what each individual member of council thinks. So those documents will be made available through the website.
Understood. I was just trying to avoid Brown Act issues. No, we're not broadcasting to every council member.
Exactly. It's direct everything to the city manager.
And to Mr. Whitmore, or just have everything to the city manager.
I'll kick that one to James. Probably more efficient to send it to both James and Ron, but James?
Yeah, we'll send an email with, I'll send an email with Ron on it and Lucas as well, our community development manager. And then if you just want to reply to that.
Randy, you have a comment?
Yeah, you know, I think one of the, sometimes I think it escapes this community is the lack of racial diversity. I don't see it in anything that we've written in here regarding that. It's not listed anywhere. It's not talked about anywhere. It's not part of our, of who we are or what we want to be or where we're going. And I think that that, you know, I see the word sustainability and I, you know, I, you know, I see a lot of catchphrase words in here and they're great words and they feel good. But what are we going to do about, what are we going to do about the things that we don't do well? What are we going to do about, again, about racial diversity or racial equality or, or, again, the key word to me is diversity. How, how do we?
Randy, that's my suggestion is that we, we.
I get that, and I'll submit that, but I'm just trying to make it public. I'm trying to make it public that, that the majority in this community, and the majority of the people making rules and the majority of people sitting on council and commission may look like the community, but it doesn't provide us the diversity that we need in this community. And I think we need, I think we need to figure out where to put that into our opening statement. That that's what we're going to strive for, or that's what we're going to be for, or that's what we will be. But I think we need to think about it, and I think at this moment in time, we really need to reflect on it.
Thanks, Randy. Yep, and one option would be to have a diversity and inclusion committee in some form. So, but it sounds like we all want to wait and talk about this later and.
Touch our feedback, yeah.
Thank you so much, Ron, for all your beautiful, hard work and being this incredible plan for us. Appreciate it.
May I, may I just say thank you to the planning commissioners for the good work that they've done. I really, really appreciate. I've watched how hard you work and, and, and we just, you know, I think they'll understand that we really want to dive into it, into it for ourselves. I do. I want to take a deep dive for myself and look forward to it.
Okay, and we'll see you on June 2nd at the housing element, correct, Ron? It's our next meeting?
Yeah, it'll primarily be Veronica Towne from Veronica Towne and Associates, who's our subconsultant for the housing element. But yeah, I'll be at the meeting.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are ready to move on to the trolley, number five.
Thank you. This one, I will try to keep very briefly. We, the city has partnered with the Chamber of Commerce over the last couple of years. And this year, one of the, we had talked about some potential projects that could help support businesses while also having other positive impacts. And one of the projects that was identified was the idea of trying out a, a special downtown trolley pilot program. And so the idea being that for a trial period of four months starting in June, we would have a special sort of express route that would go through downtown to the businesses and hotels. This would help potentially support local businesses. It would reduce downtown car congestion and parking if we get more people out of cars and into the trolleys and potentially reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So we looked at this as a project that has a lot of potential benefits. And then we recently had received some additional funding for the trolley from, from the federal funding sources. So we identified this as something we could do using those funds that would come at no cost to the city as a test run. So it's really just this project that we have been working on for several, or thinking about for quite a while. And we figured that June with businesses reopening, with, you know, potentially traffic coming back to town, that this is something that we could try that might help address all of those things. So this is the, the program. The idea would be that there'd be a downtown trolley that would stop at the stops identified on the site map, which is included in the packet. Those stops include stops along, some existing stops, but also some new stops. The existing stops that the trolley would stop at would be at or about Rancho Inn, the Bank of America, the Ranger Station on Golden West Avenue, Park Road at the Park and Ride, the Arcade on Signal Street, Kenyatta Street, and at the end, with potential new stops at Libby Park, in front of the Nest on Montgomery, Bald Street, Bryant Street, Whispering Oaks, the Hummingbird Inn and the Capri Hotel, and then Shady Lane, Fulton, and Drowned Street. And those stops were identified working with local businesses and the Chamber of Commerce as some locations that they believe that there is demand for the trolleys. So this is a project we could launch as a test at essentially no cost to the city for four months because it would be funded by some of those grant, our federal funding sources. And so we are recommending proceeding with a four-month test of this downtown trolley route. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions on, about that.
Susa?
My question is, I've had three times. My question is, I've had three times requests for the trolley to go to the Firestick Pottery just past Boardman. If there are like a number of students on the trolley, can they request that of the driver? Is this set in stone? How would that work? Like, or if we figured out, if I spoke to the owner of Firestick Pottery, found out the days that students want to go there, could that, could there be some flexibility in the schedule? Because she said she has students who would like to take the trolley.
Yeah. So this downtown route is Saturday only. So we have heard some other requests for potentially other days. But this, this particular test run is Saturdays only. And it was specifically stops that the merchants in the Chamber of Commerce identified as high priority stops. We did actually, we had gotten a request to consider Firestick. So we submitted that to the, to that group. But when, when the proposed stop map came back and the requested stops, the, I think the feedback on that stop was it just, it was, this is supposed to be the downtown express route. And so going all the way out to the east end for, you know, for one business, they just didn't identify that as a, as matching the needs of this, this route. So, so to answer your question, the routes aren't, the route's not set in stone. The council has the opportunity today to identify any modifications. But this is the recommended route from the Chamber of Commerce and the businesses.
Thank you, James. Randy, questions?
I, you know, I think that that's a good idea by Councilman Souza. I think what we should do though is establish the route, get it up and running, and then see if there's an ability to do what Souza would like, because I'm sure if one group in our community would like that, I'm sure there's going to be others. And so that's where you receive the feedback and then you go back and you actually sit down and say, how can we readjust the routes to fit the needs of these groups of people? So I think we need to start out with what we have, monitor it and build on it. And if it's successful, run with it. So.
Just can I interrupt? Any other questions? Because we still have public comment before we discuss.
Yeah, question. So, so at the right time, for example, if Firestick Pottery has a special Saturday event, and they could, you know, maybe at some point after we test this, there could be some way to, I wouldn't want him to drive out there all for nothing, you know, but he would know that if he drops off a group of, say, six, that, and then he would know when, when they're done. You know, you know, so anyway, I'd like to at least report back that we're working on it.
Yeah, I think, I think to Councilmember Haney's point, that is one point I should debate is, the idea of this is that four month trial. So at the end of that, we'd come and report back to council. So if there are, if there is an idea to, you know, modify or add stops, we could do it at that point, too.
Thank you, Randy.
James, I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, this is a special trolley providing that route. We're still going to have our regular trolley services.
Ah, yeah.
So as soon as there's, there might be other opportunities for them.
That was my other question. Thank you. Yeah.
Yep. And this is just the special route Saturdays only, but the normal routes will continue to run.
Normal route. Okay.
Thank you, Randy, for clarifying. Any public comment on this item, Gail?
Yes. We have Bill Miley.
Thank you.
Mr. Miley, you can go ahead and speak.
I don't remember this, but I think it's a good idea. And I will support it. I mean, that's, I didn't really intend to do this. I guess I checked the wrong one. But anyway, I like the idea. Thanks.
Always good to hear your voice. Thank you very much.
Bill wants to drop off by his house. That's what he wants.
All right, we're ready for discussion.
Could the trolley make it up the hill, Randy? In terms of further consideration of Firestick, could we at least get a report in a future city manager report about the feasibility of whether the trolley could even turn around there?
Yeah. Yeah, we could do that.
Just asking, as part of future consideration.
Turn around.
That'd be, that it has to turn around somewhere.
Well, where? At the pottery place?
Yeah, if we, yeah, in other words, as part of the evaluation of whether we want to even try that, could the trolley even turn around there?
Well, Boardman has access. They could make a turn on Boardman and drop off.
Yeah, they don't have to go right to the business, to, to the fires. They could stop.
I just, I just wanted to report back as to how that would, that's all.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
That is a great idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Great way to support the businesses, too.
I agree.
Ryan?
Yeah.
Good.
Then what we would ask for is a motion to adopt the resolution.
Move to adopt.
Okay, may we have the roll call, please, Gail? Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Zoom, zoom.
Okay, great. All right. Then moving on to our last item.
One minute break, please.
Okay, we're all back. Let's back in. All right. Number six, the earth-friendly management policy. And I just first want to say a big thank you to Patty and Kathy and Sylvie and Stacy for working so hard on this, putting in so many hours of incredible work. So thank you. All right, James?
Yeah, there's not much staff report for this item. It's on at the, the request of Mayor Sticks and Councilmember Francina. So we included in the report some information on our current practices. We've nearly eliminated use of herbicides and pesticides, but we use it in rare cases for invasive weeds. And we still use pesticides, I'm sorry, the mechanical traps, mechanical or electrical traps for rodents. And so that's, that's just the report on what we currently do. And then I think I'll leave it to you to go through the earth-friendly management policy.
Thank you, James. Well, and we also have Kathy Nolan here, I do believe, to answer any questions, correct? Can we bring, can we bring her in, Gail? Is she here?
But, hang on. Can we wait a second on that?
Yeah, I'd like to, a point of order on that. I think members of the public are certainly part of public comment, but there's nothing listed on the agenda for any other presenters except for Mayor Sticks and Councilmember Francina.
All right. Well, she is available if we have any additional questions. Souza, do you want to?
Oh, James, do we? I meant to look this up earlier. But do we have a dumpster ordinance? Or do we have a, either as part of some regulation that, that they, that we can't have open dumpsters that attract rats and mice?
Maybe within, that might be something we could address within some of our like nuisance ordinances, but I don't think anything specifically aimed at that. I don't think we have any specific language for that. I think the city attorney is searching for it as we speak, so he might be able to add to that.
We do have an ordinance, if I could jump in there, thank you, that provides that substantial accumulations of trash or debris, or accumulations of garbage or refuse, or the improper accumulation of waste matter creates, each of those is a nuisance. So we don't have an ordinance that says, in so many words, dumpsters must be secured against raccoons and other, and rats and other critters. But any dumpster or trash enclosure that creates a problem is a nuisance and is prohibited by our code and can be pursued through code enforcement.
Okay. So if we see open dumpsters with trash overflowing, we can call code enforcement to address that?
Absolutely.
Use the app, Susan.
And yes, we have the app now.
You're muted, Randy. You're still muted.
So, so we have two presenters of this policy. And it's you, it's, it's the mayor and Councilwoman Souza. Maybe, maybe we should just divert our questions to you and have us give you the answer. For instance, can someone explain clearly what the earth-friendly management policy is?
Yes.
What is it?
Yes. It's a policy that no toxins, no poisons, no Roundup, all of the, anything that is toxic is avoided, and that we have practices that make it so that, you know, for example, we prevent, we practice that prevent problems rather than then later on addressing the problems with herbicides, pesticides, rodenticides. We already adopted in 2014, an ordinance discouraging the use of rodenticides. And some of the, many of these practices, the city is already doing. But to put it in a policy form, that is, that is our goal. So that tonight, we give staff direction, and you know, the things, you know, we, I expect that you read it. I mean, I could go through it. I'm happy to go through it. And that your questions are addressed. And then we give council direction as to, you know, to come back with it and then, and then which will lead to a public hearing so that the public can weigh in.
So is, is feces and urine a part of this? Are they anywhere near, are they anywhere in the program as far as a?
No.
An undesirable chemical?
No, we're talking about specifically Roundup, which is a known carcinogen, and any other chemicals, toxic chemicals that cause cancer, you know. And it, it's great coming right after the general plan and the, and the vision, because we do want to be a beacon of sustainability. And we do want to prioritize human and ecological needs and animal needs above all else. That is our mission. And we really, you know, in some form is symbolic, and yet it's, we have to do this now. There's no turning back. We have to, can I finish, Randy? We must stop poisoning our planet, our children, our water. There's so much research out there. It just has to stop. So that's what we're doing.
So I, you know, that's a, that's a nice statement. But I would think that before you make a statement like that, especially in our community, where is it at? And who's doing it? And what are the studies that have given you this information that this has to take place today? And I'm talking about the city of Ojai. This is not, this is not Ojai General. This is us specifically. So do you have any tests? Do you have any labs? Do you have anything that you two could present us tonight as to what the pesticide issue is and what the dangers of it are? Or is this a broad program?
We provided a whole sheet of links at the very end, right before the management policy. Souza, do you want to add?
Yeah, I was going to say, Randy, we've answered all the question, we've, we've addressed everything in this in-depth report. The, if you watch the videos that we provided, it'll tell you the why. And all you have to, you know, what, what my, what I feel is that the city should set the example. The city should set the policy that it's, it's a way to educate the public. And if you walk into, for example, the hardware store next to Bonds, in the far corner and in other hardware stores, you will see Roundup and every toxin and every cruel way to dispose of rats. There's glue traps, things that are unacceptable, that are cruel and toxic. So, I mean, the evidence is out there. My neighbor was put down a sawed lawn, and the people that were putting it down advised him to put Roundup in the soil for two weeks prior. There's ample evidence that had he done that, it would have killed everything good in the soil. It would have made him, from that moment on, dependent on using fertilizers and, and all, you know, to keep the lawn going, because everything natural would be destroyed.
I, I guess what I need is, I need facts.
The facts are there.
There are no facts in the front end of this report that you two are presenting. What you're telling me are feelings, and what you're telling me are something. But there's no fact here. How many people use Roundup in Ojai? Do you know that number?
The fact is that Roundup causes cancer. There's so much cancer in the trolley. And there's lots of studies, and we provided an entire sheet, it's right here, of studies. You can watch the videos. You can look at the research.
You should have put that in the report.
Can I finish and not get interrupted? There are so many other cities who've already adopted this. Malibu, for example. And I also want to thank Keon from Malibu for helping us so much. It's just, it's at the point of no return. Yes, Bill?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Randy, I didn't want to interrupt. I just had a question.
Go ahead. I.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure there'll be more. I have several questions, but I want to first clarify, the discussion about use on private property, isn't that completely outside the scope of this proposal?
Yes, but I was saying, may I ask, or may I respond? Yes, but I was saying, may I ask, or may I respond? Or should I wait?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that the issue of private use on private property is, is outside the scope of this-
Yeah, yes, it is. But in response to, you know, Councilmember Haney's question, I pointed out that the public obviously is still using Roundup because it's sold all over the valley. And my thinking is that the city can set an example how we can manage our, our properties without toxic chemicals. That's, that's the, that's the purpose of this. And, and, and if there are exceptions, they should be extremely rare. And we can discuss, you know, the exceptions that staff outlined in the report. I'm aware of that.
So again, again, I think that's a lovely statement, but it, but there's no facts associated to it. So the follow-up should be, we'll contact Public Works Director and we'll get a copy of how many gallons of Roundup he has purchased, how many sites he's applied it on. He should have a copy of the material safety data sheet. He's got to file a report with County Ag. So again, if, if you two were presenting this, I would have liked to see all of this information, which is going to help substantiate what you're saying. Instead, I get this gift of all this other stuff. We've got to be about Ojai, you guys, that's my take. What, Susan, do you know how many gallons of Roundup that we've applied in the city? This is pretty simple.
I can tell you this, there's overwhelming public support. We had 145 letters today supporting the city adopting the draft, the draft policy proposal. This is something that has been discussed many other times in council meetings over the years. We've, you know, if you'll recall before COVID, we were having meetings. You know, we've, we've, we've discussed this many times. I expect council members to do their homework. It's not, I don't think that, that Public Works is using a lot of Roundup. They're very, what's the word, discriminating how they use it. But that's not the point. The point is to have a policy in place that is, that, that expresses our intention. It's part of our goal to be a sustainable, healthy city. It's part of that.
Well-
Whatever, you know, you're entitled to your opinion. I'm not going, I feel like-
Well, these aren't, these aren't opinions. I've just, again, I'm going to push back because you have to. You received 145 letters and I received 7,305. You know what my work? Not an issue. Because if it was an issue, they would have contacted us. So that's what I'm trying to say. I don't know, I, I, I just don't know what we're trying to achieve, Susan.
I didn't know if you took the time to read the policy. Did you read it?
I read this. I, in fact, I even, I even found the fact that someone in here stated that we had a coastline. So they couldn't even take the fact that they, Malibu had the coastline. They incorporated it into ours. So I read it. I was just wondering when the coastline is going to come in. There's no differential here. No one is talking about the differences between our community and Malibu's community. There's just, there's not a lot, a lot, Susan.
That can be your feedback. And if you found the word coastline in the Ojai draft policy, we'll delete it. That's the, we're looking for feedback from council members, you know. We're not looking for the kind of questions you're answering. Your, I don't feel like your questions are sincere. I feel like they're designed to embarrass us and belittle something that we've worked, that the, many members of the community have worked on. If you were really, you know, okay.
Well, I don't think that's, I don't think, Mayor, I don't think that's fair to say because I'm asking questions that I have a right to ask. And I would think that as the person who brought this to council, that you keep telling me to do my homework, it sounds like you need to do yours. And you need to bring the information that's going to have the impacts to our community. Because of right now, maybe 145 people have a concern, but 7,300 and some haven't said a word. So I'm just asking simply, bringing something forward doesn't make it true and doesn't make it right for the community. So present yourself better. That's all I'm asking for, Susan. Give us facts, please.
Can I add one thing? And then I know, Ryan, you want to say something. The question is not, how much are we using? The question is, are we using it? And poison is poison. It doesn't matter if you're near the coast or in a valley. Ryan?
Thank you. I, I did do my homework on this. And I, again, I feel like this is a bi-weekly issue where we, one council member accuses us of not reading, which I think is totally not fair. I think it's totally unfair to start personally attacking everybody about that. And I do a lot of work on this and we're all underpaid. We all spend a lot of time doing it, but I do not think that's, that that's fair. I have one simple question. You guys keep throwing Roundup out. The active, the active ingredient in Roundup is glyphosate, is that correct? We all agree with glyphosate? Has the Environmental Protection Agency declared glyphosate as a carcinogen?
Yes.
They have not. In 2020, they said they did not. So you want to talk about homework? The reality is, in January of 2020, the Environmental Protection Agency for the United States of America determined it was no longer a carcinogen. So this, this attacking Roundup is, is a red flag, a misnomer, and completely false. And go on their website and check it out yourself. And I have a hard time accepting that we want to beat up one thing and we're missing the point here. It is not, that, that's what they came up with in 2020. It's clear as day. You guys all have a computer in front of you, go look. And I'm telling you, I don't understand where this is coming from. It may have been previously, but it's not. And attacking one specific thing doesn't make sense. And that is a massive flaw in this entire particular proposal.
I think we should have the public hearing.
Okay, any other questions before the public comments? Is a question, Randy?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a term committee. Could you two explain what the committee is? The who, what, why, and how? Or is the, is that to be done later on?
Later.
So we don't know what the committee is that's in here? We're just suggesting we have one, but we don't know what it is, what it's going to do, what its powers are. We don't know any of that right now?
We can determine that later. I think, you know, that what's on the table right now is, are we going to allow these chemicals in our town?
Well, this is a part of what's on the, the table.
Right.
It says here, it says here, "In the proposed policies, oversight is provided by a committee subject to the Brown Act." So I would think that someone would have a definition of the committee. I, I mean, this is your presentation. You surely have thought it through, what you thought the committee would do and how it would function and who it would report to. And does it have a budget?
I, I think that question is premature right now, to be honest. We were going to take that part out. And then we decided we'll leave it in, council can give feedback. And there's many, many, there's different ways. The, the point is, is not necessarily a defined committee. I don't feel that we need to have all the answers. My goal is to, for, for, you know, to, I would like, I, I don't know, I, I, we were going, I thought we had, we were going to have two speakers in the waiting room. I thought we had Keon from Malibu and we had Kathy Nolan to answer questions.
Well, they didn't write this, they didn't present this.
Yes, they, they worked on this. No, there's a whole committee that, there's, there's probably 10 people that have worked on this. And then, and they're listed in the, in the cover letter to James.
But you're the two council people that brought it to council. It's your responsibility to do the presentation.
Well, that's what we present, gave you all this information. Why don't we, let's move on to a public comment.
Are we going to do a three-minute on the public comment?
Yep. Okay, first, how many speakers do we have, Gail?
We, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in the queue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I will mix it up a little bit and not call on Bill Miley first. I'm going to call on Stacy Repel. Stacy, if you're there, if you can unmute yourself, you can go ahead and speak. Stacy, if you're there. There, you look like, there you go, okay, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, thank you. And I want to start off by saying thank you to the council members for all your hard work and dedication in making Ojai so wonderful and such a special place to live. You know, your work doesn't go unnoticed. And I know it can sometimes get complicated and challenging or take more energy than you thought it would. But I'm speaking in support of now, the earth-friendly management policy doesn't need to be complicated or challenging nor take a lot of energy. It simply needs to be accepted and adopted. This policy provides the very important and necessary protocol and guidelines which are currently missing for Ojai. That's what this policy is about. Let's get those guidelines and that protocol in place, ensuring a healthier environment for us all. Many residents here are concerned about their well-being and the health of our environment and really want to know that you, our leaders, care enough to adopt this policy and set an example for the entire community. With all the good work you are already doing that is noted in the staff report, we shouldn't settle for any chemical-laden answers that have proven time and time again in thousands of studies to pollute and poison everything they touch when we don't need to. We need to be finding a way forward by looking for healthy alternatives, testing and promoting those alternatives and saying no to anything that will harm our residents, our children, our creatures, our land, air, and watershed. Tonight, we're asking you, our leaders, to show us, your community, that you are ready, that you're ready to do this, that you're ready to commit to an environmental policy and lead the way with guidelines that protect, that are humane and progressive, truly earth-friendly, and that align Ojai with many other cities that are taking a stand in making a commitment to their citizens and their environment official. If we want Ojai to thrive now and beyond, we need to embrace these policies now. We can't just say, oh, we already do this. We need to have, we need to have policies in place for the future. We should be making the right choice, the one that sustains life and that sometimes isn't the convenient one. Think about how much pride we can all take in knowing we have adopted this life-affirming policy for Ojai and for all of our future generations. Thank you for your time and your consideration of this policy. Myself and many, many people in your town really hope that you step up and make it official. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy.
Next, we have Patricia Pageling. I am probably mispronouncing your last name, I apologize. You can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and talk.
Yes, you, you had it right, Patty Pageling, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Stix and Ojai City Council members. I want to thank you for all the good work you're doing for Ojai. And I also want to ask that you adopt the Ojai Earth-Friendly Management Policy. I wanted to say that glyphosate is listed effective July 7, 2017 as a known carcinogen to the state of California. So you're right about the US EPA. The California EPA states that it is a carcinogen. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at the long list of cities, HOA, schools, and universities across the US that have already adopted policies replacing toxic synthetic products with healthy, organic practices, including New York City. On Earth Day this year, the City Council of New York City voted unanimously to ban the use of chemical pesticides on city property. We know that Greg Grant, as head of Public Works, has been working towards implementing greener, healthier practices. The Ojai EFM policy needs to be adopted so that whoever is in the position of Public Works Director in the future will continue in the same direction. And I just want to offer that if the city doesn't have the funds to pay for an EFM coordinator at this time, I'm willing to volunteer to help in any way I can as an interim coordinator. And our group would be happy to assist in moving this forward. So I just want to thank Keon for all of her work. Our, as you know, the earth-friendly management policy that we have shown you is based on the Malibu policy, but we tailored it as much as we could catch. I don't, I don't remember seeing the word coastline, but if we made that mistake, I apologize. And I'm just asking that the city of Ojai to protect the health of our children, pets, and wildlife. And I thank you so much for all the good work you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty, and thank you for volunteering to help out.
Yeah.
Next, we have, wait, one moment. Next, we have Sue Williamson. Sue, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead and talk.
Hi, I'm, I live in Ojai and I'd like to strongly urge you to adopt the Earth, Ojai Earth-Friendly Management Policy. Because Kim Conte is unavailable to attend the meeting, I've been asked to read excerpts of her letter that was sent to the City Council. Her letter begins, "Dear Mayor Stix and City Council, my name is Kim Conte and I'm the founder of the national nonprofit Non-Toxic Neighborhoods that has now helped over 200 municipalities end their use of harmful and synthetic pesticides. We are in support of you adopting the Earth-Friendly Management Policy. We have dear friends who are residents of Ojai and who have taken a former, sun-kissed, conventionally-maintained orange grove and transitioned it to an organic and regenerative form to help feed families in need. The city of Ojai has already taken so many environmentally-friendly policies online. This is the natural next step for your great city. In February 2016, the city of Irvine adopted a historic, organic, and regenerative land management policy, proving that you can have beautiful parks, athletic fields, and open space without the use of harmful and synthetic pesticides. We now work to get organic and regenerative tech and tools donated to cities like yours to show city staff and your contractors that you can control all pest pressure in the landscape organically, from everything from arundo to rodents. We now work, let's see, okay, hold on. Non-toxic neighborhoods, our organization and our advisors, believe that it should be a basic human right that our children are protected from harmful and synthetic pesticides where they live, learn, and play. We provide the resources, training, organic and regenerative toolkit, expertise, and partner with you every step of the way to successfully transition to organic and regenerative management to protect people, pets, and our planet from harmful pesticides. Please support the city of Ojai's adoption of Earth-Friendly Management Policy tonight." And I'd just like to say two things. It seems to me that Randy, you know, is involved in landscaping and clearly has some bias about this. And as for whether or not glyphosate is poisonous, there have been major lawsuits that have been awarded millions and millions of dollars to people who have been harmed with cancers from the use of Roundup. So the EPA, I mean, this is just crazy to even think that this is not a poison. So I hope you will support this. And it's very important to having a healthy town. Thank you.
Eric, can I make-
Can we finish the, the public comment?
Just want to, can I just make one quick comment to Sue? She's right. I'm probably the only one out of this group, council members, that's even around any chemicals of this nature. And so maybe they need to understand that I don't use Roundup and I haven't used Roundup in probably 10 years. So- So, I under, I understand a lot of the principles that we're trying to get to, but I don't think anyone should be subjected as to what another person does, or how they operate, or things of that nature. So, Sue, we've had lunch before, give me a call so I can educate you on my practices.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Next, we have Kathy Nolan. Kathy, if you're there, if you can unmute yourself and go ahead.
Hey, thank you, Kathy Nolan here. I wanted to say that I am in favor of an Earth-friendly Management Policy, and that I was contacted as a volunteer consultant. And I just wanted to let everyone know that my background is, I have a degree in horticulture, but I has had a Pest Control Advisor's License with the state of California for 40 years, also an applicator's license, and a state license required for a landscape contractor to apply pesticides, whether they're organic or not. I was licensed in four categories: weeds, insects, pathogens, and plant growth regulators. And my emphasis has always been on sustainable, organic, and integrated pest management, and always kind of searching for alternatives to toxic chemicals. So, I understand the challenges that were brought up in the staff report and that have been discussed this evening by council. I've had that experience, and I've worked with others in the field, like I said, for over 40 years. I also want to start by saying thanks to all of you, council members and staff, just for being open enough and approachable enough to allow us to come forward, you know, through, to city council members and to bring this to you. And just for all of your efforts to make Ojai a sustainable and safe environment. This doesn't happen in every community, so I do applaud you. And something I do happen to say when I usually get in front of council is that the city of Ojai is a trailblazer, and it still can be, and that we do tend to be forward-thinking and preemptive. So, that leads to why should we adopt a policy? A policy will help take this one step further beyond what the city of Ojai is already doing, and ensures in the future that, you know, when this council changes and when city staff changes out, we'll still be following that policy and those measures. It also makes a statement for other cities in the county, in the region, the state, and in the country, as was pointed out by a couple of the other members of the public. This is going nationwide. But I also know the devil's in the details, and I know there's a lot of questions, and I actually welcome all the questions, as tough as they may be and may sound. I realize that clarity, looking at cost-effectiveness and definition will all have to be fine-tuned. But you don't have to do this alone. You've got local volunteers to help, you've got the city of Malibu, Laguna, other cities, and organizations like the Non-Toxic Neighborhoods are willing to help if and as needed. Once again, I understand your concerns. You may have regarding restrictions on use of methods and materials, but I also wanted to let you know, there's always new methods and materials, sometimes even old ones that are brought back that are effective, and I would be happy to share, and I've been doing research on that. I won't get into it right now. But also, I wanted to just thank you again, and I look forward to a sustainable and regenerative future here in Ojai. And it's, does seem to be aligned with our new in-process vision statement for our general plan update. Thanks again.
And, and Mayor, just one quick, one more quick comment. Kathy would verify my mechanical applications, my skillset, and the fact that her and I've worked on a number of projects, and we have never used Roundup or any type of herbicide for vegetation management. We do it the old-fashioned way. We dig it out.
Thank you. Okay, next, please, Gail.
Next, we have Keon Schulman. Keon, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. If you can, if you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and, and speak.
Yes. Okay, here we go. Good evening, Mayor Sticks, City Council members and staff. I'm Keon Schulman, Director of Poison Free Malibu. Our goal is to inform the public about issues associated with toxic pesticides and to offer viable solutions. The policy you have in front of you makes a statement that is reflective of many green, organic communities across the nation dedicated to eliminating the use of hazardous pesticides and shifting to environmentally-compatible practices. Earth-friendly management means the protection of citizens and the environment, addressing issues critical to sustainability, clean air, water, managing carbon through negative regenerative soil management, and eliminating fossil fuel-dependent fertilizers and pesticides. The policy guarantees the right of citizens, children, and pets, the safe use of city structures and recreational areas. Malibu stopped using all pesticides in 2016, and in 2019, it became official policy. The main stakeholders controlling the narrative around invasive species and their funding, both from the government and at research institutions, is the chemical industry. For example, Dow Chemical donated $10 million to the Nature Conservancy. Dow pesticides and Monsanto Bayer are among the top pesticides recommended in invasive species control and restoration programs. Organizations and governments are strongly motivated to use poisons because of this. All of those little bits of poison do add up. Dear Rachel Carson, questions this poisoning? Quote, "How could intelligent beings seek to control a few unwanted species by a method that contaminates the entire environment and brings the threat of disease and death even to their own kind?" There is a rise in serious health problems, including cancer, Parkinson's disease, diabetes, reproductive failures, developmental disorders, autism, as well as the steep decline in biodiversity, all related to pesticide use. Pesticides can stain the soil for decades, contaminating the earth and watersheds, watershed using their highly-toxic, long-lived breakdown products. Negative effects across all studied pesticide classes showed a clear hazard to soil, life, and ecosystems. Proposition 65, known for its cancer-causing and reproductive toxicity, glyphosate was included in 2013. Cities across the United States, Europe, Canada have banned it because of its health implications. We urge you to continue your Earth-friendly management control to unwanted species. Poisoning the earth with synthetic herbicides, trapping and exterminating rodents will never solve the issues. The animals will return. This is a continuous costly cycle that poisons the earth and causes unnecessary animal suffering. Pesticides are in the air that we breathe, the water we drink, and the food that we eat, and it's even absorbed through our skin. Please consider passing the policy you have before you that protects children, citizens, pets, wildlife, and the entire environment from harmful pesticides. Thank you very much, and I'm always available for questions.
Thank you, Keon, and thank you for all your dedication to keeping us, protecting our children, our animals, our planet. Next, Gail.
Next, we have Wendy Lerner. Wendy, if you're muted, please unmute yourself, and you can go ahead and speak.
Hello?
We can hear you, go ahead.
I just wanted to, to add one request, to have some sort of evaluation and analysis of the cost differential to the city with what they are doing, what they aren't, and the personnel or man-hours required for the monitoring that's referenced in this, cost of product, so forth. I would think that anything that's brought us the policy that there should be some kind of analysis of its cost factor. The other thing I, I wanted to say is, this appears to be a boilerplate document, and I know that Santa Monica used it, but I wonder where it originated in the very first sample? I mean, what organization? Was it a national organization? Was it a state organization? Was it an international organization? Because it does have that boilerplate look. Thank you, good night.
Thank you, Wendy, and we, we'll find out that information and get back to you. Okay, next.
Next, we have Bill Miley. Mr. Miley, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please, there you go.
Hi, yes, I'm here. Well, how could you be against an Earth-friendly policy? I like the idea. But the one thing I want to talk about is the proposal that trapping rodents would, they all would have to be released. I disagree with that. That's not good. The rodents we're talking about are ground squirrels, gophers, and rats and mice. Rodents can carry diseases, and those kinds of rodents can't be allowed to multiply and run around in Ojai. So, trapping and euthanizing, in my opinion, is a must. So, some examples. Worldwide, rats and mice spread 35 diseases that affect human beings. Rodents directly carry 11 diseases in their bodies that they spread to humans. Others are carried by fleas. Ground squirrels are associated with the spread of Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever, Rat Bite Fever, Tularemia, Chagas Disease, Adiospyromycosis, which is a fungal disease, and Encephalomyocarditis. It can also serve as a reservoir for plague because they carry fleas that have the plague, and they get it from the blood out of the rats and carry it on. So, now, what about gophers? Forget to trap them, and we gotta euthanize them. Can't let them go in your neighbor's yard or up in the foothills. Gophers also carry disease, Hantavirus, Leptospirosis. But since most of the time they're under the ground, they don't spread it to humans. But they do spread fleas and ticks to domestic pets. They also can destroy and damage valuable and historical plants and trees. And then, if you've ever run across an open ground and you had your foot go into a gopher hole, you know that's not a good idea. So, they can create tripping and falling hazards for people and also for horses. So, you gotta be able to trap them and get those disease-carrying rodents out of our city and not spread, not take them to Ventura and release them in the riverbed. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Is that it? That's it, Gail?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Bill?
Yeah, I think my comments are not going to be on, you know, some of the, the goals and principles here, but the fact that this document is so broad and sweeping, that the potential for unintended consequences is very pronounced. When there's categorical statements, you know, without qualification, again, as Kathy Nolan so aptly put, "Details are important." There's no details here. For example, if you, if city policy is to say that there will not be any fungicides, herbicides, insecticides, and rodenticides used, period, nothing. May not be, complete. Well, if we, what are the definitions for each of those categories? And you say, "Well, it's obvious." Well, for example, one of the most widely-used insecticides for hundreds of years is neem oil, which is a vegetable oil pressed from a nut of a tree, a fruit of a tree. It's a natural product. Is that banned? This language would say yes. Dishwasher soap is used for killing aphids. So, if insecticide is defined as anything that kills insects, you would say that a dishwasher soap mixture that used to address aphids would not be allowed on city property. It encourages the use of biological controls, but one of the most effective biological controls are in some conflict with the idea of no genetically-engineered ingredients, which also needs to be defined, because a number of the most effective biological controls reducing the need for more toxic substances are biologically-altered organisms that are put into certain ecological situations. I think that Mr. Miley pointed out that if we, you know, trapping and release of everything can be a problem. When we are going to say we're going to ban synthetic fertilizers, what exactly is that definition? Does that mean that we are, you know, it's, it's kind of hard to imagine how you're going to maintain ballfields, which are an inherently artificial environment, you know, grass for playing softball, or soccer, or foot, you know, quickball, whatever we want to call it. And how you do that without some use of synthetic fertilizers is, is again, something that I think would have to be analyzed. There's obviously costs included in here, but we don't have the cost estimate. And again, I already mentioned about the, the problem of being very specific as to how the committees would operate, or the coordinator would operate. And I want to make one final point, and I'll step down on my comments. There is a statement about precautionary principle, where it says, "Of course, yeah, absolutely, no toxic synthetic pressified product is free of risk." Very little in life is totally categorically free of risk. Your life is a matter of choosing between risks and making risk-benefit calculations pretty much every, every day and everything one does. But the next statement is problematical, of requiring industrial producers to prove that their pesticide products demonstrate an absence of risk, rather than requiring the governor, the public, prove that human health is being harmed. You know, zero risk is a, a problem philosophically, because if you say that it doesn't matter how much there might be a benefit for something, we're not going to take, use that benefit if there's any modicum of risk, no matter how small. So, these, the, I, I think the problem here is that a lot of the good principles that we're trying to advance here are problematical in such a broad, sweeping policy without even having a definition section. That's my concern.
Randy?
Well, it's interesting that Bill was quoting from that section, because when I read it, I said, "Wow, what an interesting way to govern." If you took this practice here, anticipatory action. This, there is a duty to take anticipatory action to prevent harm. Government, business, and community groups, as well as the general public, share this responsibility. That's, that's a great one. Right to know. The community has a right to know complete and accurate information. I believe I asked at the front end of this discussion for your facts, and we haven't been presented them. Yet, it states clearly that that information on potential human health and environmental impacts associated with selection of products, services, operations, or plans. The burden to supply this information lies with the proponent, not with the general public. The group that brought this here tonight needs to substantiate their lies. That's all, I, I think it's fair to the public. Alternative assessment. An obligation exists to examine a full range of alternatives to select the alternative with the least potential impact on human health and the environmental, including doing nothing. I mean, if you read, I probably shouldn't read this, but I will. Full-cost accounting. What elevation, when elevating potential, when evaluating potential alternatives, there is a duty to consider all the reasonable foreseeable costs, including raw materials, manufacturing, transportation, use, cleanup, final disposal, health costs, even if such costs are not reflected in the initial price. I would probably say in there, you've got to quantify the labor applications along with this. Participatory decision process. Decisions apply. The precautionary principle must be transparent, participatory, and informed by the best available science and other relevant information. I, I can't say anymore. I mean, we should probably apply this to ATP. I'm just telling you, there's, there's a lot you're asking us to do, and you haven't provided us enough information to jump in with, with full-tilt boogie. It just, I don't see it. So, maybe we need to file this and let you have another stab at it and bring back more information based on the comments you received tonight. I wouldn't have a problem doing that. In fact, maybe that's what the motion should be. In fact, maybe that's what the motion should be.
Susan, then Ryan?
Yeah, I just want to say something. When, when Bill gave his feedback, I perceived it as constructive criticism. Randy, when you, your first question to me was rather, it just completely threw me, asking about pee and poop. It was a completely inappropriate, inappropriate question. And then you asked for data specific to Ojai. They're just, we don't need data specific to Ojai because the earth is the same, plants are the same. The human organism is the same. If it affects, you know, if there's data from another city, that data applies to the biology of Ojai, you know? So I'm fine to, I'm, you know, I'll be listening to the tape again. I'm fine to bring it back with the constructive criticism that was stated. And, but there's something about the way, I don't know if it's me or if it's you, but what I, what I feel is that we brought this forward in a sincere effort. We're not criminals. And I feel like you, the way, the tone of your comments, it just felt like, and I've seen you do this before and I've just, it, I felt, I felt very, very disrespectful. If I, if we made mistakes, if there's gaps, we're happy to provide the gaps. But we didn't deliberately, you know, we worked very hard on this and obviously there are, obviously there are gaps that the people that have, are working on, we're happy to work on it some more. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, we'll answer every question.
Alls I would say is, in that, just to respond to you in a kind way, don't make this about me. If you failed to provide the proper information to move three council people or two into your corner so that they would vote on your project here, you have failed. And you have failed because you have not provided the facts that affect Ojai. I ask you a simple question upfront about species and urine. Are they detrimental to our community? In a, in a large area, would you allow your granddaughter to play in a dog park where dogs are let off leash and can urinate and poop and hope they get cleaned up? Would you, would you let your daughter in there? So I think it's a valid question that you need to respond to as to what is safe, what is not safe? Where is it safe? When is it safe? You, this is yours. If it's yours, I suggest you own it. Don't, don't blame me for your inability, for your inability to present this properly.
Randy, I'm not blaming you. Constructive, we welcome constructive criticism. But there's no need to have a tone as if we've committed some terrible crime. We've done our best. I own the fact that there are gaps in the document and we're happy to bring it back and we will bring it back.
Ryan?
Thank you. I was just, you know, I do, it's always tough when we name stuff the earth-friendly management policy and then have to debate it because when you put that name on it, it makes it really hard to say no. And I think Bill Miley said that as well. Because I think we have a, I think our current policy is also earth-friendly. I don't think Ojai passed a non-earth-friendly policy before. I don't think any of our policies are non-earth-friendly. And I hardly think that our current one is non-earth-friendly. Now, James, I'm going to ask you a question and you know, I do this sometimes, but I already know the answer. But am I articulating this correctly? And that our current policy only allows the use of the, any of the types of chemicals or substances that would be banned under this earth-friendly management policy. The city of Ohio only uses them in the most limited circumstances where it's absolutely necessary and no other means will work to achieve the goal of whatever we're doing. Is that correct?
Yes, that's our current goal.
All right. And I think that we have other issues. We have issues of invasive species. We have issues of fire mitigation. We have other things that, if I'm right, correct, James, if based on this report, there's situations, especially specifically in Stewart Canyon, and that's hardly the only place, where we don't have a reasonable means to take care of some of those types of mitigations, specifically fire and other invasive species, where it works with substances that would be banned by this earth-friendly management policy. Is that correct?
Yes, Stewart Canyon in particular, yes.
So I just, I just don't, you know, again, I heard symbolic again. I hear how this is going to impact us and you want to lead by example. But why tie one hand behind our back to do the things that we prioritize as more important? I do think those are, are really important things that we are doing. I'm not for non-earth-friendly management policies. I'm against all non-earth-friendly management policies. I'm against all of them. But I do think the reasonable use of chemicals that are under these categories in limited situations where there are not other things that work and being someone who is right now literally neck-deep in issues with the watershed and getting rid of arundo and invasive species and all these other things, this would make it impossible. And again, we're four-point-two square miles. And once you step one foot outside the city, there's, these same policies don't exist. So, and I, and I do think it's missing a lot of the science. I mean, there's a real debate about some of the science. There's plenty of science I don't think is debatable. But I, but I don't think all of this is completely settled. And I do appreciate what we're doing. I do appreciate the effort everybody's put in. I think that the city of Malibu logo shouldn't be on the policy for the city of Ojai written next to it. I think that was a little bit of a misstep. But I do appreciate that we're trying to do the, these, these ideas that we want to, you know, pitch progressively. But not every great idea and every progressive environmental idea is right for Ojai. It's not a carte blanche that everything that comes before this council in this city, we've got to be the most progressive on or equally progressive to the most aggressive and progressive cities and areas in the country and in the state. And on this one, we're hardly falling behind. But I would much rather have a city that correctly manages our use of chemicals that may be problematic or substances that may be problematic versus burns down or doesn't have the right fire mitigation parts or spends way too much money trying to figure out a different way to do it. But you're not going to get rid of arundo and eucalyptus and some of these other invasive species that we now understand, while they are natural, they're not necessarily good for sustainability. These are some of the tools we have. And I think if we wield them as minimally as possible, only under the right circumstances, it's appropriate, without saying we have to throw an absolute ban on all of it. And unlike other cities where even the small crack in the door would allow it to be a problem, that's not us. I think we are responsible enough as a council, our staff, our team of people know that you find every other way to do it until you go to the, one of these other ways. And it doesn't mean in spirit we're not behind it, but it might mean in practice it's just not, not the right move for Ojai.
Susan, then Randy?
And James, do we have, actually have a policy as to what the practices that we are doing now? Is there a policy?
So I think it was probably eighteen months ago to two years ago. We, we had talked about this at council. And at that time, we, council gave direction to only use it when absolutely critical. So I told the planning, or the public works department not to use it on a day-to-day basis. And to, and so currently we don't use it. And it's only used for the special project, which is right now just Stewart Canyon.
And I'll add that that, that direction from the council is documented in the minutes for that meeting and we can get the precise date.
Correct.
To council once we double-check it.
Yes.
Policy.
Yeah, it was at a city council meeting.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that you want more information because, oh, I'm sorry, Randy, I just went. I know that stump grinders do work to get rid of the eucalyptus root. So we can do, we can provide more information specifically on what you want to know. And as our speaker said, lots of ways to get rid of arundo. Okay, Randy?
So the eradication of these pests requires a mechanical application and most of the time a chemical reaction or a chemical application. So in the old days, when they started eradicating this arundo, they just did a broad spray. Because if you understand how Roundup or Glastapate works, it translocates. So it's taken into the green tissue, works its way down through the stem, goes to the roots. Once you see the yellowing of the stem and the leaves, then you've known that it's translocated from the top to the bottom and back up. So I think what happened is early on, that was the thought of how to get rid of it. And what they recognized was, yeah, you got a pretty good kill. But the reality is this is a really tough weed. And by, you need to know the term of a weed. A weed is an undesirable plant. For some people, maybe arundo is a plant they like, but to most of us, it's a weed. So the next thing came, why don't we dig it out? And so they started digging it out and once they found out they were digging it out, then they started spreading the rhizomes. And so what they did is they created a bigger problem. So the new technology that I'm aware of is the fact that you cut the arundo down now. You take it down as far as you can to the ground. You wait for it to re-sprout and you need to dab on the Glastapate, dauber it onto the tissue and you catch it as a young plant. Now, that's the practice now. So you've seen, you've gone from one large mechanical application or practice of just using Roundup willy-nilly to now actually looking at it as a science and spot applicating, which is the best way to do it. It's the same as when I was a golf course superintendent. When you get a rhizoc disease or you get a brown spot disease, what happens is most superintendents will fire up their hundred-gallon rig. They'll go out and spray every one of their greens. Well, if you know what this material costs, you start saying to yourself, well, how much money am I going to spend on applying chemicals? The second thing you ask yourself is, this green has it specifically, I'm going to treat it. Most people, most people in that industry in that time is, yeah, I'm going to treat it and I'm also going to put a preventative down. All of this science has changed. That's what I'm trying to say here. So that's my background. It's changed. Now, can we do better? Absolutely. I think everyone here is agreeing that we can do things better or we can do things differently. I just want to make sure that what we do, that it's about Ojai. And that the practices that we're going to develop and the, how we verify the use of these chemicals, how we track them from the purchase to the material safety data sheet. You know, any, any consumer, any community member has a right to go out to Stewart Canyon while we're applying a herbicide and ask for the material safety data sheet so that they can be aware of the chemical properties of that material and how it might affect it. So there's a lot of safety things that are built into this. There's just a lot. And alls I'm asking for from you two is more information specific to Ojai. Because what I'm hearing is we have a problem. What I haven't seen is the problem. And I'm talking Ojai, I'm not talking about the world, I'm talking Ojai. Have we done soil exams? Have we looked at the toxicity levels of our soils in our park? Have we looked at the toxicity levels of the sand in our play areas? You know, we just can't guess and we just can't say, let's just do. You know, we need to do this right. Let's do it right. Let's gather the information. Let's do the testing. Let's come back with the right recommendations. Let's create the right team that's going to be on this council group that's, that's interacting with public work staff so that the community can trust us and we're demonstrating that we're doing it right because how we've gone about gathering our information and how we've educated our public. So there's more work here. I mean, it's a good start, there's more work.
Thank you. Well, we will answer all those questions. And I, I hear you about saying what's right for Ojai. On the other hand, poison is poison. Cancer is cancer, doesn't matter where you are. So there's definitely a lot of data out there and a lot of science and we'll get you whatever you want.
Well, again, I don't want to disagree with that statement because you're entitled to it. But we're making ordinances for this community. There's seventy-five-hundred of us, that's what we're responsible for. I'm not responsible for anything outside of that. And that's how I look at this. And if we're going to spend time and money and effort and energy from our staff, it has to be about Ojai.
We'll get you a list of dogs and cats that have died from eating poisoned rats. We'll get you a list of people with cancer. Is that what you're asking for?
We'll give us anything and everything that you think is pertinent to your argument.
All right. And some of that information is in the, in the one-hundred-and-forty-five public comments that we received.
Right. And all the other alternatives for getting rid of arundo and the eucalyptus. There's a product called EcoMite that, and we're going to do, we're going to work, use that. And that, there's been a lot of success with that, so we'll get back to you.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. I hope you're not getting back to me. I hope you're getting back to all of us in the community.
We're getting back to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have our work cut out for us.
Yes.
Okay, well, then we'll move on. Thank you very much, to the city manager's report.
Yes, I have a few things, one, a few things just to mention, I'll keep them quick due to lateness. Ojai, or I think everybody is aware that we are, we were made aware of a public or a planning director's hearing on the Ojai Quarry or an Ojai Quarry Amendment for that project at the Ventura County Planning Director level. We are going to be submitting a comment letter on that that we will share with the, with the public and the city council and the, and others that are interested. That hearing is scheduled on Ojai Quarry on May twenty-seventh. And I think the Ojai Valley News put an article out today giving some information on that project and what this change means. So anybody watching may be interested in reading that and considering a comment letter as well. So that, that was one. Second, just a reminder that Emergency Preparedness Day is also May twenty-seventh at eleven a.m. And everyone's invited and welcome to attend or watch online. It's at Libby Park and also available on YouTube. We also, it was mentioned earlier today, but we have a Housing Element meeting on June second at six p.m. A lot of property owners are submitting interest in potentially being considered for the affordable housing overlay. And so one of the items that will be discussed at that meeting are all those properties that have submitted that interest. And then the Planning Commission will kind of work through whether to look at some of those properties closer at that June second meeting. So that also will be streamed and available to watch via our website. And then just the last comment, because I've been asked a few times over the last couple of days is, people have asked if we got a revised, updated agreement from the sheriff's department. I think at the meeting on May fourth, they indicated that a, we should receive a revised agreement over the next couple of weeks. And just for those who are asking, we have not received an updated agreement at this time. And we'll, we'll note when we do receive that. So, so those are the updates from the city manager.
Mayor Six, I have a couple of questions for the city manager. And then also I will have a short council member report and then some comments on future agenda items. James, I'd just like to comment to reiterate what you made, a comment you made about the post-closure final reclaimed surface plan for the quarry. That is the, that is the, in the current conditional use permit as to what the quarry is supposed to look like when it's, after it's closed and the final reclaimed surface plan?
Yes.
What they're being relieved of is, is because I believe they use the word over excavation, the required fill would be 97,000 cubic yards that they want to eliminate as a requirement in the current final reclaimed surface plan. And just to let everybody know what that is in terms of a visual, that's an acre of land, 60 feet high. That is the responsibility that they have under the current reclaim, reclamation plan that they're being relieved of uh, by the county planner recommendation in this recommended action. Just wanted to get that visual out there for the order of magnitude we're talking about without a real analysis of what that means in terms of, of post-closure ecology on North Matilahay Creek. That's very unclear. So I just want to make that comment. Um, also, a few meetings ago, we had a, adopted a, a file, a plan on the, uh, modification of the ATP project.
Hmm.
Uh, what is the timetable? I don't think we've completed that direction from council. You, you have a sense of a completion timetable for that direction?
You know, we, uh, there was an update we sent out maybe a week ago, um, on the status of that, and I don't remember it offhand, but I'll, I'll find that and I'll recirculate that.
Cause I'm, I'm getting a fair number of questions from the public on that. Particularly with respect to the parking obstructions and.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we'll follow up on that.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm not going to touch ATP.
Uh, you told me that, you told me you weren't, Randy.
I'm not.
Any other council member reports?
Uh, Ms. Sticks?
Yep.
I, I have one short comment. Um, I, I wanted to note that the, um, council protocol revised April 21 on page five, and I think somewhere else, uh, refers to Roberts Rules of Order. Uh, we passed an ordinance change. I think that needs to be corrected in the council protocol to refer to Rosenberg's rather than Roberts. Um, and the other thing too is I, I think we, uh, there ought to be, take a look at the, of the, uh, how to make sure we capture the language and the ordinance changes we've made with, with respect to the nomination and confirmation process. Um, the, uh, number three of additional mayoral powers on page seven says the power to make appointments to the various, to, to the various city commissions and boards subject to approval by the council and these protocols. And the ordinance changes we've adopted in the last couple of years, uh, I don't think really accurately characterized by that statement. Might want to rethink the language.
Yeah, it would just be, it would just be arts commission reflected in that. So we can update that.
I just, I just wanted to, you know, just point out those two things in the protocol document, my council member.
Alright, Mayor?
Yes.
Also under the same thing, we, we, a couple of years back, we agreed to that, um, if it's not, if it's not a, um, a, you know, you, you man, unanimous group of the council regarding an agendized item, that if it's two people, they write their own white page. If it's one person, they write their own white page. And I think we need to clarify that and understand it so that if two people bring something to the council, they need to understand, they have to present it. If one person does, they have to present it. And that's a rule that we've had for quite a few years that, um, I don't know how we're holding people accountable for it. So it's, it's just important. And then one final thing is I understand that, um, the mayor has the right to appoint presentations. Um, I would just ask kindly that maybe we do one per council meeting versus two. We spend the first half hour of our meeting on presentations and I know the last couple of them have been worthwhile, but um, if we're trying to get the people's business done, it's 11 o'clock.
Yep. Okay. Note taken. Thank you. Any, uh, Susan?
I have a question about, uh, what council member, um, Haney said. If two people bring an item, it's our, it's, if two council members bring, brings an item, bring an item to the council, they have the responsibility to present it. Um, but could we not appoint an expert to present it?
No.
Because we can't be an expert on everything and we have.
Well, it helps you to become better prepared for whatever you're speaking to, but it's your responsibility.
Relitigate that, please.
Yeah.
Yep.
As you know, in future agenda items, it is simply added to the agenda for discussion next time.
And I have some future agenda items to ask about.
Wait, wait, I, 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 I'm lost. Randy, I, I don't understand. I just want to know if, if, if we, if Mayor Sticks and I bring, um, the earth friendly management policy back, are you saying that we personally have to do the presentation? Or can we also, or can we have an expert?
Under the city's current protocols, an item brought, put on the agenda by two members of council or the mayor singularly is presented by that person who puts it on, person or persons to put it on the agenda. Any other person, of course, may present it public comment. So an expert or anyone else designated could present it public comment. Uh, that item could, that rule could be adjusted through rewriting the protocols, which I've already heard support for returning as a future agenda item.
Okay. Alright, now I understand. Thank you.
I, I believe, um, Susan, the goal wasn't to punish anybody. What it was is to make them understand if you're gonna, if you're going to present something, just recognize that you've got to do the legwork, the homework. Rather than just hoping you can throw something on and staff will deal with it. We're just limited with staff time. Staff shouldn't be writing your white page or your presentation. Um, you two or when you and Bill do something together. Um, you know, you guys have always done that or Bill's done it for you, but that's just the way it was. And I, we did it as a council. I think it was just so that we kind of restricted how many of these agendas or, or two, two people throwing stuff on in an emergency that might have been an emergency for them, but wasn't for the rest of us.
Okay. And, uh, Bill?
Future agenda items, um, I have three items I'd like to talk about. One, we have a, uh, we had an item continued from a few meetings ago with respect to assigning, uh, the, the BAB, uh, fire hardening measures task. Um, that item was continued at that meeting. A few meetings back, I, I would suggest it's time to get that on the next meeting's agenda to resolve that one way or another. Um, that item was continued, so I think it needs to come up. Also, uh, I didn't know what our plan is. We, you know, a few meetings back, we had a term sheet adopted for a tiny home pilot project. Uh, pretty minor ordinance changes. Um, it seems like we're, we're kind of overdue for get, for following up on that as well, uh, since it, it was a while ago. Uh, you know, I just don't like to lose these threads of things that we, you know, said we're going to come, take back and come back later with. And the other thing I, I'd like to really suggest is that we try to get, um, really focused on this, I think, clear interest community-wide in, I mean, emergency preparation in a, in a disaster plan and that we, we move to getting a plan defined and written and presented to this council for deliberation and official adoption. So we have an official plan uh, adopted by council. I think that would be very helpful.
Um, I have one and to, it, it will come out, made by experts. So.
Well, like, like I said, it, it, to be a, a city policy, it needs to come to council and I, I'm looking forward to that.
Good, good. Um, and our, our agenda, James sent out the agenda a couple of weeks ago. So we all know what's in an email. So we know what's on the agenda for next time. So anything else before we adjourn? Alright, thank you all. Let's just go take care of our town and our children and have a great evening.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.